Good morning. Good morning. We are going to get started right on time today, since I was so late the other day. And I do know that members of the committee have other commitments this morning, but they will be joining us as their time frees up. And so I appreciate everyone being here and appreciate Representative Canino is here right on time. But we are going to start the agenda for this public hearing. So we will convene the public hearing for Labor and Public Employees Committee. This is March 11th, Tuesday, and we are ready to begin. And we are very fortunate this morning to start off the day with our comptroller, Comptroller Scanlon, welcome. And you are the first on our agenda.
Good morning, Senator Kushner. Representative Canino, good morning. Thank you for letting me testify this morning. I'm here today, Madam Chair, on two bills, Senate Bill 1487, which is an act concerning transportation network companies, and then also SB 1488. I will not read my testimony line by line as a former legislator, but I will just summarize and say that first on 1487, the transportation network company bill, about six months ago, I was scrolling through my Twitter feed and I saw a tweet from a Uber driver that was asking me to do what several other people in other states in my position have done, which is to audit these transportation network companies to figure out what their liability to the state would be if they treated their employees as employees and not as independent contractors as they do now. I'm particularly interested in this bill because when I was a legislator in 2017, I worked to pass the very first regulations of Uber and Lyft as somebody who was using those services and liked those services, but wanted to make sure that they were safe for folks and that there were some protections in place. In the intervening seven or eight years, we've seen other states pass subsequent legislation to continue to allow for those companies to grow and prosper and be as relevant as they are in our economy today, but also to make sure that the people who work there and drive for those companies get treated fairly. And so I'm glad to see the committee raising a bill today. We did an audit several weeks ago, released that, and in that audit, we put forward several recommendations. One of the recommendations is in your bill today, which is to give those drivers more data and there be better data transparency. But I do go out in the testimony in some length to talk about ways I wish that the committee will consider strengthening the bill and doing more in line with the report that we put forward by basically giving not just the drivers transparency, but giving policymakers transparency as well. For example, we have no idea how many Uber and Lyft drivers there are in our state right now. They don't make that number available, nor do we have any sense of what maybe the median average income those drivers are making is, how much revenue they're generating. And so I would love to see more transparency on the company side to give the Department of Transportation some more information so that all of you as policymakers can make potentially other decisions when it comes to regulating Uber and Lyft. Secondly, on SB 1488, this is one of my biggest legislative priorities this session, and I'm grateful for the committee for raising it. This bill is very, very simple. It basically says that if you are a Connecticut worker and that you are working on a Connecticut job site that is being paid for by taxpayer dollars, it gives my office the ability, after hearing from the Department of Labor, that there is a serious wage theft violation going on for me to stop payment to those projects. And the principle of this is pretty simple. We shouldn't be paying contractors if those contractors aren't paying their workers fairly on state projects. There is precedent of other states doing this. The comptroller of Illinois, for example, has the power to do this. And while I remain confident in the Department of Labor's, you know, investigation of wage theft complaints, I think that this bill and this ability of me to do this is a really strong way we can make sure that the bad actors that may be out there are not being paid when their workers are not being paid, and especially because it's taxpayer dollars. So again, I will just be summarizing, and I want to thank the committee for raising these two bills. And I welcome any questions. Good morning.
Good morning. Well, first of all, I appreciate your testimony. I did have an opportunity to see your audit report and about the transportation network companies. I think interestingly, much was drawn from what's going on in Massachusetts with the state of Massachusetts entering into an agreement with Uber, Lyft to make certain payments that will protect workers, protect the drivers. And I think that's really important for us to look at. So I know in addition to what's in the bill today, we are going to take a close look at your recommendations based on what's happening in Massachusetts and what we could potentially do here in Connecticut to make sure that this, you know, growing industry is properly regulated. And so I think that is our job. So appreciate your testimony here today. I know that some of the questions that came up around 1488, when we were first discussing that bill, one of the main questions was related to whether or not you, the comptroller, could make a determination to stop payment to a company that was engaged in some form of wage theft without it having gone through DOL. And so I think in your testimony just now, you clarified, and I want to make sure I'm correct, that it would first go through the DOL processes, that they have to investigate wage theft before it would come to you.
Yes, Senator, that's correct. So the way that this would work is a worker makes a wage theft complaint to the DOL. The DOL investigates that. If the investigation rises to the level where the DOL commissioner believes that there should be a stop work order, the commissioner has the ability to tell me that. And then I have the ability with my discretion to make a decision of whether or not I want to stop payment to that job site in conjunction and coordination with the Department of Labor based on what their investigation is showing. But I want to be very clear that this only happens when the Department of Labor Commissioner has determined that there is enough evidence there and enough of an egregious violation there to put forward a stop work order.
I appreciate that. And I do know, and I'm sure you've had these conversations with the Commissioner of the Department of Labor, but there are many steps they take to remediate this situation so that they give plenty of opportunities to the employer that they're investigating to remedy the situation and make the proper payments. So it's not something they do quickly or overnight or, you know, secretly. There's lots of conversation between the offender and the Department of Labor before it would get to you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for the comptroller? Representative Weir?
Thank you, Mr. Comptroller. I please excuse my tardiness entering the room, always trying to race around this building. So I didn't, was not here for all of your testimony, but I'm familiar with this subject. And part of the, some of the concern that my colleagues are, I'll speak for myself, have had over this is affecting other contractors downstream. So if you've got two or three contractors that come after one who created the violation, and then we authorize stop payment, which in theory, I understand is taxpayer money, you know, 100% I understand with the theory. How do we protect other contractors who may have purchased, who may be, you know, have people waiting to start the project? How do we avoid, do you see a way to avoid harming other contractors who had no part in the violations that you're talking about through you, Madam Chair?
Thank you, Representative. I think it's a, it's a fair question, and I think it's a question that certainly would be on the minds of those subcontractors. But my belief here is that for the first time, giving the threat of potentially losing that state money to flow into those projects, it would make these contractors, which I am admittedly saying are, you know, a small percentage of the state contractors doing state work, are potentially bad actors here. But I think those bad actors would think twice about messing around with this because of the potential penalty of me turning off the state funding for that job. I think for me, though, this bill is just a principle of fairness that taxpayer dollars should not be going to contractors who are potentially violating the fair wage laws of our state, and that we shouldn't be continuing to pay those contractors if they're not paying their workers. And as Senator Kushner just said, there are many steps along this way that if it were to get to me, it would be a very, very bad situation because that initial complaint could get adjudicated and figured out, and there would be no risk to the contractors of those subs. It only is when the worker puts a complaint forward, the DOL investigates it, the DOL thinks that there's enough going on there that they're concerned that there's a stop work order, and then they can tell me, and then I have to use my discretion of the situation. So I think there's many safeguards along the way, that this would only be used in the most egregious of examples when all those other steps are not working to compel that contractor to resolve that situation. And so I'm hoping that adding this extra layer of protection will help ensure that this is a never-used policy, but it's there in case we need it.
Representative Canino.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much, Mr. Comptroller, for coming before us today. I just have a question on SB 1487, the TNC bill. Actually, two questions. So first, would this bill require a company like Uber or Lyft to provide information to their drivers of how much the individual is being charged compared to how much they're making on that ride?
Yes.
And so then, in that case, I was just wondering what the impetus was for behind that, because I know in many other industries, let's say a loaf of bread at a grocery store, you wouldn't require the grocery store to tell an individual how much of the money that you spent on that loaf of bread is going to the bakery, or is going to the farmer that grew the wheat, or all these different things, or how much is going to keep the lights on in the grocery store. So I was wondering why we're soloing out the transportation network companies in this bill?
Again, fair question, Representative. I'd just say in your analogy, the baker who bakes that bread and sells it to the grocery store is told by the grocery store what they are paying him to bake that loaf of bread, and they're selling it wholesale. The Uber driver in this scenario has no idea what he's being paid for the services that he's rendering. And that is different than when, if you're the driver of Uber and I'm the passenger, I get out of that car and I see on my app exactly what I have paid for that person, and I've paid it. That driver does not always know that. And so what we're asking for here is just the simple fairness of that person now knows what the fruits of their labor generated to that company in terms of what it costs them to drive from point A to point B, and what the company made off of that. And the drivers are simply just looking to know how much they are generating for that company through the work that they're doing.
Representative Canino.
Thank you for that answer. I mean, yeah, I would just say that, ask any driver, when they take a ride, they know exactly what they're getting. They wouldn't take the ride if it wasn't worth it for them. If they have to drive 10 miles and they're only making a couple dollars, wouldn't really make sense. So one issue I raised in committee is it really seems like this bill is really just trying to stoke the envy of the drivers rather than provide anything valuable to them that they're not already getting. So I look forward to more discussion on this bill, but I appreciate your responses.
Thank you, Representative.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairman. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Comptroller. Delighted to see you again. It's funny, you and I talking about TNCs. I think you and I had a multi-hour debate four or five years ago about it. And I remember actually, one of the items that we had talked about during that debate was the annual fee. And I know it's not in the bill, and I probably shouldn't even talk about it. I don't want to give anyone on the committee any ideas. But I noticed that you, I noticed that you suggested increasing it from $5,000 to $50,000 along with increasing the per-ride fees. And I'm just, you know, I just found it ironic that you want to increase these fees at the same time we're trying to advocate for more pay for the drivers. Aren't these things going to have an impact on the ability of the TNCs themselves to be able to pay people? And secondary question to that is, you know, don't we want to see more competition? A $50,000 fee for entry into the state to do business. I mean, I'm a Realtor. I mean, I think the license fee is a couple hundred dollars a year. You know, that makes more sense. For me, I think we might have, you know, more competition and therefore better results for individual TNC drivers if there were more companies. And, you know, even allowing people that are TNC drivers to start their own companies if it was actually affordable and could offer them a benefit. Just curious of your response. Thank you.
Yeah. So thank you, Senator, for the question. What I'd say is that when we first passed that bill and we're debating it, it was 2017, this was a relatively very new technology, right? Uber did not even begin servicing the state of Connecticut until 2014. So we're only about 10 years into this being a technology. And in 2017, we set the fees very low for the exact reason that you're talking about, Senator, which was to try to, you know, get folks to join this industry and not stifle that growth. But what I think you're seeing over the course of the 10 years is it's very expensive to start one of these companies. It's very difficult to want to do it, which is why Uber and Lyft have essentially a duopoly over this. And what that 2017 bill also did, as you may recall, was to give cab companies the ability to enter into this field as well. And so there are some companies across the state. Metro Taxi, for example, I know does this because I worked with them when I ran the airport in New Haven, where they sort of operate as a TNC as well. I think that there should be different levels perhaps of what we do those fees. So if it is a small cab company trying to get in the TNC business, or it's a startup business, that perhaps that $50,000 fee is not appropriate to them. But I do feel that a $50,000 fee to a company the size of Uber and Lyft is more than appropriate, and certainly even less than it is in most other states where we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of a fee. I think over seven years with inflation, and given how large these technology companies are, that asking them to put a $50,000 fee is certainly not going to stifle their business.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate the answer. I'm thinking on protocol. So yeah, no, I can appreciate that. I mean, I don't see it the same way. Clearly, you know, I don't think we should be charging companies different amounts of fees based on their ability to pay. I don't come from the ability-to-pay model. I come from the fairness and you should have a standard license fee. You know, and I feel like, you know, these two companies you mentioned, they pay, you know, a great amount of taxes and stuff like that based on their success and the size of their companies already. You know, you mentioned just a moment ago that there was only two companies, you know, except for maybe a few outliers who are doing some aspects of the business. And that's because, in your words, it's very expensive to do it, and it's a complicated thing, which I think we all acknowledge. You know, based on that, trying to boil down this transparency issue into letting the drivers know what the company is making for each ride, why are we so concerned with that? I'm really trying to understand it because it looks like we're just trying to, as my good colleague used the term, stoke the envy of the drivers, because you're not simultaneously also asking for all of the expenses that the TNC has to pay. You know, they've got countless expenses overhead, and people back home, you know, crunching the numbers and doing the very expensive to do it and complicated parts. Is there a reason why we only want to include the amount that the company is making on the ride, not the expenses through you?
So Senator, I think it's a good question for you to ask perhaps the drivers that may testify later today, because I can't certainly speak, you know, to what the motivation is as a driver for wanting to know this information. But I can just surmise that, you know, I think we have principles in this country of people do work and they get compensated for that work, and there is a social contract, a thing that we talked about every time, I feel like we talked about this, where, you know, you apply for a job, that person tells you what they're going to pay you to do that job, and then you decide whether you want to do that job or not. I think right now, there's a question of whether or not they're getting enough information about the work that they're doing, and all they're looking for is a little bit more transparency from these companies about the work that they are doing, so that they can make that sort of decision in our society. It's a free country. We have the principle of that. But they just don't feel like they're getting enough information to be able to make the decision of whether the work that they're doing has been properly compensated and that that is something they want to continue doing. That's the only piece that's in this bill. But before, during my testimony, I just want to reference the fact that the other half of this that I think is important for policymakers to know, and that I hope that you may consider including in your bill, is just basic information from the companies about how many drivers there are, what perhaps the median fares are in the state. These are all information that I think is not too onerous to ask the companies for, and I think would help us make some policy decisions in the future, but that's not included in this bill right now.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I appreciate that answer. And I don't know how much of that information is publicly available. I know we had the bread example earlier, although I would suggest that, you know, the vast majority of employees that work is certainly in the retail, restaurant industries, you know, lots of things. They don't know the ultimate amount of dollars that they're generating for their company. I mean, how could you keep track? You know, you work in a deli, you crank out, you know, a few hundred items a week and so forth. Certainly, you might know the amount that each item is sold for, but again, without having the expenses, like, I don't know how many employees know how much their, the owner of their, you know, a deli, for example, pays for rent or pays for utilities. And I just think it's, you know, incomplete information. And what really matters to an employer-employee relationship is their individual relationship, which is how much they're being compensated for the job that they're doing. And that's something that people do compare all the time, you know, when they're, you know, looking for a job in their industry. I think people get an idea of, you know, what companies are paying. So again, I don't mean to debate it with you. I just wanted to point out that I think more people than not don't really know what the generation of their work provides to the company that they work for, at least in some sort of very clear mechanism. But I, you know, I look forward to, you know, this conversation continuing. I'm not saying there isn't improvements we could make to that industry. I'm just very concerned about, you know, onerous legislation that might, you know, cause these companies to not want to do business here. I mean, I just hate to hate to see that. But I really appreciate your testimony. It's always delightful to see you, Mr. Comptroller. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. But following up on some of these comments, I would imagine one of the things that, and I'm surmising this from previous testimony we've had before this committee from drivers, that they don't always get paid the same amount for a given fare. It's variable. And I would imagine one of the reasons why this information would be so valuable is precisely to the point of how much are they really, what are they really getting? What are they really earning on the business they're doing? And maybe there's another company that offers a better deal. And that is impossible to know if you don't really have a sense of it. When this company first started, I remember very clearly because I used it when I was in DC before I got to Connecticut. And I remember it was quite unique because, it was unique, quite unique is improper, isn't it? It was unique because they, they gave a certain percentage of the fare. The fares could be variable, but the percentage that the drivers got a percentage of the fare. And that was the basis of how they started up. And we were told we didn't have to tip because they were getting a percentage of the fare, which was so different than what we had done in the taxi industry. And so I feel like that has changed tremendously over the years. They no longer get a set percentage of the fare. And I think they have no way of knowing if this is a good deal they're getting, or they could get a better deal. So I assume that's one of the factors.
It absolutely is, Senator. I think this industry, you know, the, the sort of, this technological industry, right? It's not just about Uber and Lyft. It's about DoorDash, right? It's about all these different, you know, gig economy jobs. They are unique in the world in which that there is not always transparency about what they're being paid for. And so I know we've been having some discussion today about that, but I think that that's all anybody's really asking for, is to be able to know what they're getting paid. And to your point, whether they can be paid more working somewhere else. Right now, if you are somebody who works in fast food, you would know whether McDonald's or Burger King is going to pay you more money to do that same job of running that grill. They don't know whether or not you'd get paid more to be a driver on Lyft or a driver on Uber. And I think we're just trying to level-
Or maybe Metro Taxi even.
Or Metro Taxi. So we're just trying to level the playing field so that people know what they're making. And to the Senator's point, I'm certainly not opposed to Uber or Lyft having to break down the costs of that, right? So if they tell the driver, okay, the ride, the passenger was charged $20, 10 of that went to you, five of that went to pay our taxes, you know, two of that went to pay, you know, something else. I mean, I'm fine with them giving any breakdown they want to the drivers and showing all the different charges, but we're just asking them to at least tell the driver what it is that they are getting compensated for that ride.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any hands. So thank you for joining us again today, and we will pay close attention to both bills.
Thank you all so much.
Next up, we have Representative Liz Linehan. Good to see you this morning, Liz.
Good morning.
Good morning, Representative.
I made it here today. Thank you. There was some question as to whether or not that was going to happen. So I appreciate the conversation we had earlier. Senator Kushner, Senator Sampson, Representative Weir, and the good members of the committee. I'm here to testify on House Bill 7197, an act concerning paycheck transparency. This legislation will require that pay stubs are easily readable and readily understood by the workers earning their pay, and in some cases, prevent an employer from paying out large sums of money to employees because mistakes are found and remedied after a long period of time. The issue at hand are differentials. Differentials are any rate of pay which is in addition to your standard hourly wages. Differentials are commonplace in the healthcare industry. For example, someone may make a base wage of $20 an hour, but receive an additional $2 per hour for the night shift, another $1 per hour for the weekend, time and a half for overtime hours worked over eight hours during a 12-hour shift, and even another $1.50 per hour for training another worker while on that shift. And believe it or not, that same worker may receive all of those separate differentials on top of their base rate pay for the same single shift. To further complicate matters, all those differentials are given pay codes, most often codes which aren't intuitive to their meaning, making it difficult to decipher their correlating terms, and therefore near impossible for a worker to determine even if their pay is correct in the first place. Now, imagine you are a minimum wage employee who may not have finished high school and perhaps Engle- you are a minimum wage employee who may not have finished high school, and perhaps English is your second language. There are a lot of steps to that one worker's rate of pay, making it prone to human error, and as I just pointed out, easily misunderstood and also difficult to check. Whether intentional by the employer or not, mistakes like that can easily add up to wage theft of thousands of dollars per year per employee. While researching this issue, I spoke to employees or their representatives in Waterbury, Cheshire, Wolkett, Meriden, Norwalk, Danbury, Southington, New Britain, Milford, and Hartford. I spoke with minimum wage food service workers and advanced degree nurses making more than $40 an hour in their base wage, and not one single healthcare worker dismissed the issue. All employees noted that reading and understanding of their pay stubs and the coding of differentials, overtime, and PTO were a huge problem. And all employees I spoke with surmise that they were likely underpaid more than once in their career. And while I'm focused on healthcare workers in my testimony today, I can say with confidence that any employee and employer will benefit from the bill in front of you. The legislation will require simply that the employer make easily available a code key to decipher the pay codes listed on their pay stubs, so that employees can easily check if they were paid appropriately. Upon hire, new employees will also be trained on how to read those pay stubs. Why is this beneficial to the employer? Because once errors are discovered, corrected, and tallied, that employer may be required to pay their employees for the missing wages, which could equal thousands of dollars per employee. To give the employer the benefit of the doubt and say it was simple error does not negate that the Department of Labor could make a case for widespread wage theft. For a real life example, I offer the following evidence. I was given permission by a group of employees for a third-party vendor inside Norwalk Hospital to share their experience. Their employer, Morrison Healthcare Food Services based out of Atlanta, operates within the hospital and employs approximately 70 workers. A few of the workers noticed their paycheck, paychecks were significantly less than they should be. I want to reiterate, just a few of those 70 employees noticed that their paychecks were less than they should be. Their representatives asked for and were provided pay detail reports, which I have here, which included codes like AE, LL, and FLSA, which are not intuitive to their meaning. In this instance, AE meant arrived early, which could be calculated as overtime. LL meant left late, which could also be calculated as overtime.
Representative Lenahan, your time is almost up. Please include your remarks.
Thank you. And FLSA was defined as Fair Labor Standards, which apparently refers to the Fair Labor Standards Act that establishes minimum wage and overtime pay requirements. But little to no further explanation on their paycheck was there at all, rendering those codes useless in determining if they were paid correctly. While it's clear that these codes are not intuitive, what is additionally problematic is that the explanation of the codes provided little to no transparency as to how they are being paid or should be paid, further complicating and obfuscating matters for their workers. Upon further investigation, it was found that all differentials for this group of workers in the month of December 2024 were shorted by at least $1 per hour or not paid at all. PTO and overtime were unpaid, and there were no differentials paid to employees at all in the month of January. And as I drove here this morning, I checked with their representative, who said that as of right now, Morrison hasn't rectified the situation moving forward or paid any back wages for at least three months now, despite repeated attempts. Employees are working unpaid. This employer is withholding wages. Their representatives must painstakingly investigate, and this company will have to pay thousands in restitution once resolved. It should not get to this point. Let this be a cautionary tale which prompts you to take action. By passing this legislation, we can help to ensure this isn't an issue moving forward, that we will empower workers to know if they're receiving what is rightfully theirs, and allow the employers to pay them appropriately and not have to pay out thousands of dollars in fees. Thank you again for this opportunity to submit testimony. I look forward to working with you all, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Representative Lenahan. And I will say that when this proposed bill came to us, we were all a little like, what is this? And why is this? And I really appreciate your testimony today. It was very thorough. And the investigative work you've done is unusual. We don't often get legislators who've done that work on their own. So I appreciate all your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator. And to be honest with you, I didn't know that this was an issue myself until it was brought to me. And this alone shows in one month how many different codes would be within people's paychecks. I mean, the problem is really pervasive.
And I know that when we first saw the proposed bill, we were afraid that you were just saying they had to print these explanations on the pay stub. But your explanation that this would be kind of a cheat sheet, it would be a glossary of the terms that are used on their paycheck, so they would not have to print it every week or every month even.
That's exactly right. And the legislation also does say if there are any codes that are added or changed, that they will need to add that. But if it's listed on their website and as a link on someone's electronic pay stub, that someone can just go click on that, and it's updated as they go, and they'll be able to know at any time what they're getting paid for and why.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Are there any questions or comments? Representative Canino.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Representative, for coming to testify.
Thank you.
My only question is, under current Connecticut law, are individuals allowed to go to their employer already and ask for an itemized breakdown of all the different codes and an explanation on their paycheck?
They are. However, a couple of things I want to bring up. First of all, when we're talking about these pay codes, their representatives, as I mentioned in my testimony, did ask for an explanation of those pay codes, and the explanations that came back weren't helpful at all. For instance, I mentioned LL for left late. Well, what does that mean when you leave late? It means essentially that you need to be paid for that time that you were there. It also means that if that time was overtime, you might need to be paid an additional time and a half for that time that you're there. There's all sort of ins and outs that go with it. And so while they can ask, right now, we're finding that the explanations really aren't making sense, number one. But number two, put yourself in the position of an employee who, like I mentioned, might be a minimum wage employee or someone whose English is their second language. And there is fear there to go and, for lack of a better term, poke the bear and say, what is this about? So while something may be allowable under law, in practice, it may not be easy for that employee to do. And many times we see that they're just afraid of speaking up, and oftentimes therefore go unpaid for the work that they've done.
Representative Canino.
I appreciate that response. So when these individuals are going to ask for clarification, are they just being given the description that this little line item in their paycheck was for LL? Or can they ask for clarification on that? I mean, I would imagine this wouldn't be a one-time ask. It would be a dialogue, because there might be certain things that need to be explained back and forth.
So I believe that the scenario that you are bringing up would be best-case scenario. Unfortunately, we know that many times best-case scenario is not actually what happens, which is in fact what is happening here. So if you look at this grouping of papers that I have in front of me, this is the 80 employees of Morrison Healthcare. And these are their wages and pay codes solely for the month of December 2024. If you look through, and I hope you can see from there, you see that there are numerous highlighted areas. Those are areas where their differentials either were listed wrong or went unpaid. And this is listed only, like I said, for one month for less than 80 employees. So what's happening really is that this is beneficial for the employer, because what if every single one of these employees went on their own singularly to human resources to ask what each code meant and to get a breakdown of that? That would take up such an incredible amount of time that in fact, by putting them on their website with an explanation, it would actually save the employer money in work hours for their human resources department and their payroll department.
I appreciate the responses. Like you, I really want to make sure that we are protecting workers from not being paid the wages that they're actually deserved. I just worry if we're creating something here that might be a little bit redundant or covered by existing law. But I would love to work with you further on this, increase my understanding of the issue, because you seem to come here with a wealth of knowledge on this, and I appreciate that. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Representative. I look forward to working with you as well on this. But I will say once again, that just because something is allowable under law does not mean that it is common practice. And I hope that Representatives and Senators will look at this legislation with an eye towards the fact that it actually would make things easier for the employer as well. So thank you, sir.
Are you finished?
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Representative Wilson.
First and foremost, thank you for coming to testify and bringing this issue to us. One of the things I know, I don't know if you've already kind of talked about it, but when we look at this as a topic or a situation, we're not, all we're asking, or are you're asking here is for kind of a legend to be created for an individual. So, you know, it's almost similar to something added to like the pay stub, or an additional thing that just allows an individual to read or understand the different acronyms on a paycheck?
Absolutely. And to take that a little further, it's not necessarily that the explanation would be on the pay stubs. It would actually just be that the employee is told where to go for that explanation, and that would be kept on the employer's website to make it for ease of use of both the employer and the employee. And that needs to be consistently updated whenever a new code is added to the payroll system.
And through you, Madam Chair. So essentially, it's even a little even easier. It's just as long as, it's almost like putting up a poster. As long as we have it so that they are able to find where it is, to ask the questions, accessibility is what we're really talking here.
Absolutely. And the work is front-loaded, so there is no real ongoing need to reinvent the wheel every so often. It's really just a one-time thing, and then just added as codes are added, so that employees can look up what they're being paid and why.
All right. Thank you so much for coming to testify.
Thank you very much.
Representative Goethe.
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you, Representative Lenahan. So my question is, I totally understand and support the concept behind the bill. The bill says that there has to be an explanation of what those codes are, as you explained. But who sets what that explanation has to be? Are there any standardization as part of this that you would see that should apply, so that, you know, in the same industry or in different workplaces, you know, the code is defined under some standard definition? Thank you.
Thank you very much for that question. I do not believe that any standardization of codes is appropriate, simply because each employer is free to create their books in a way that works best for them. It's really just about sharing that information with the worker. For instance, and it might also be contract dependent, right? Because some employees may get time and a half for overtime, some may get double time for overtime. Their differentials may be different. So it would be different even maybe perhaps within the same company, where as a food service worker, my nighttime differential may be a dollar, but for the nurses, maybe that's $2 for that shift. So there really cannot be a standardization. But if there were to be something, I think that maybe you can create a working group if you wanted to add more, to look into ways to do that. But I think for the purposes of this legislation today, the necessary first step is to require a glossary or a code key for each individual code as written at each employer.
Thank you for that. And, yeah, and I mean, the reason I ask is because, again, one of the issues you brought up is, you know, you're looking, if you're a worker, an employee, you're working, looking at these codes, and you don't know what each one means, how are we to judge even when an explanation is given that it's adequate, and the workers and the employees actually understand the explanation that they've been given? How are we to judge that that's, you know, adequate for them, even if it's posted and they can find it?
I think that that's a great question. However, it is one that we would likely determine based on after the law is in effect for quite a few years, and we can see. Here in this building, what we often do is we do things in pieces, because we don't want to necessarily paint with such a broad brush that we make it impossible to implement. The implementation here would be easy for both the employer and the employee, and could significantly cut down on possible wage theft. But I look forward to seeing it implemented over the next few years, and ask for some feedback, again, from the workers, especially in the, I believe it was the eight communities that I listed earlier in my testimony, to see if what we have done is strong enough. If it is not, sir, then I welcome the opportunity to come back and make an even stronger law.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You, Representative Weir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Representative. I look forward to seeing this progress along. I, one of the questions I have is in the second paragraph, and I don't know how, I'm not expecting you to know every line, but on line 22, talks about that this information has to be posted on the employer's internet website. Is that, was the intent of that the public side? Or is this like the company, the employee intranet site?
That's, thank you, Representative. That's actually a really great point. It's supposed to be for the employee. It does not need to be public facing. That website, we know that a lot of, or most larger employers have a human resources site or a place that they can, where employees can go. That is where it needs to be. It's not a public-facing piece of information.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that clarification. I think that makes it a little more reasonable. You know, this is information that's directed at the employees and doesn't, this would, we might not, we wouldn't be causing a company to submit things publicly that they may not want to share. So thank you for that clarification and look forward to cleaning up the language.
Thank you very much for asking that question and noting that that needs to be clarified. I appreciate that.
All right. Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I want to thank you for coming to testify today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Next up, we have Senator Martin. Did he just step out? We'll come back, we'll come back to him. Next up is Ed Hawthorne.
Good morning, everyone. So good morning, Representative Wilson, distinguished members of the committee, and also our ranking members, Representative Weir and my state Senator Rob Sampson. My name is Ed Hawthorne. I'm proud to serve as the President of the Connecticut AFLCAO, Federation of Unions, representing 250,000 working people here in the state of Connecticut. On their behalf, I testify to try to get through four before Cam gives me the gong over there, eight in the written testimony. First bill I'd like to address is SB 1484, Concerning Artificial Intelligence Protections for Employees. The goal is to protect workers from risks associated with artificial intelligence in the workplace. Core concerns we have: discrimination, surveillance, suppression of labor rights, and precarious work conditions. Risks of AI-driven adverse decisions such as hiring, compensation, termination, impacting job security and equality. Labor movement, we've developed a governance framework that we use in every single state. It's written in my testimony. I won't go through it. But I want you to imagine your boss standing over you every second of every single day, monitoring everything you're doing, and attempting to squeeze every last bit of production out of you. So if you peek at a cell phone, I know March Madness is coming up, you peek at the scores, imagine your boss standing over you and monitoring that every single day. That is what we are trying to prevent here, because we're trying to ensure that the employer's rights to monitor and maintain productivity is there, but also that they treat employees like humans and not as machines. Because if they're treated as machines, they will break down. So some key provisions in SB 1484, electronic monitoring limitations, it restricts employer monitoring and mandates employee notifications, so that they know the boss, or the boss where, as we call it, is standing over their shoulder and monitoring, knowing that they're subject to it. It often happens now. I mean, the data is kind of scattered, but approximately one-third of employers to a vast majority, depending on which data you look at, are already using this in the hiring process, in evaluating resumes, or even, you know, if it's over Zoom, or they use video to evaluate the way people speak and evaluate their hiring prospects with that. And people don't even know it. The high-risk AI regulations, employers must conduct third-party impact assessments- The high risk AI regulations, employers must conduct third party impact assessments for high risk AI systems. So in order to, when they perform those, they can identify what the potential risks for discrimination are. And we're saying that's a logical thing for them to do is if they're going to deploy something that is going to affect people, they should know what the risks are and the potential for discrimination. Also requires notification employees about the deployment of those systems. Employee appeals process gives the right to employee to appeal adverse AI decision. So if AI makes an automated decision and decides to fire you, dock your pay or demote you, that they have the right to appeal that and know the data that was used and have the ability to correct that data in order to fight back against something that, a decision that a machine is making. It also mandates human oversight and consequential decisions made by AI. AI is rapidly approaching. It's here. I mean, you can see it in our everyday lives, but without human oversight at the end of it, the risk for discrimination increases exponentially. And we have, I'll go over it, but there needs to be meaningful human oversight in that. Just not a human in the loop at the end checking a box over and over again and saying, yes, a human looked at it, having some sort of meaningful review of that. So some friendly recommended amendments that I have in my written testimony, I'll focus on a few of them. Strengthen collective bargaining rights by making it a mandatory subject of bargaining under the Municipal Employees Relations Act and the State Employees Relations Act and adding an enforcement mechanism to allow employees to file civil actions personally against the employer for prohibited conduct. And once again, the definition of human oversight, which we have in our testimony, which I think is critical as well. Why it matters, it mitigates AI driven harms such as it prevents surveillance bias, unfair treatment of employees, promotes equity, encourages accountability and empowers workers.
Mr. Hawthorne, your time is almost up. Please include your remarks.
Just like to indicate our support for establishing a working group to study apprenticeship ratio and relief. SB 1485. Objective is to evaluate and improve apprenticeship ratios. It provides proper training, safety standards, workforce development. Also, once again, the comptroller already spoke to it. We fully support that as well to enforce our wage laws. As we know, DOL is overwhelmed and we're trying to fix that. I know that everyone has voiced support for that, but it's another mechanism to make sure people get paid appropriately. And last, an act concerning unemployment benefits for para educators, HB 7195. It requires the employer to inform the Department of Labor of people that have reasonable assurance. Happy to answer questions about what reasonable assurance is and why it matters. But we think it's logical for them to do that to give some clarity to para educators about filing for unemployment claims. Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Canino, followed by Representative Goethe.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ed. Just a couple of questions on 1484, the AI bill. So if I'm an employer and I'm posting a job posting on, let's say, Indeed, or I'm posting it on social media, which both of those use algorithms, but in different ways. Would both of those require, those practices require impact assessment? So if Indeed uses an AI to match correct candidates, would I have to get an impact assessment on that? And then with the social media, if I just posted a picture of a job offering on social media that uses an algorithm to push that to specific people, would this legislation require an impact assessment in that case as well?
I don't believe it has to do with job postings, but if they're making consequential decisions about hiring, firing, disciplining, things like that. So look at the definition of consequential decisions. And that's really what we're focused on here is the potential for harm. Posting a job online, there's really not potential for harm there. Or it could be, you know, who they're targeting, things like that. But we're really focused on the consequential decision making. And we have some recommended amendments as far as clarifying the definition of, you know, consequential decision making and stuff like that in my written testimony. But it's really about the decisions that AI is making automatically without any human oversight, any notice in something that could really affect somebody's life, such as hiring, firing, promotion, docking pay, things such as that.
I appreciate that answer. And then have, do we know what the average one of these impact assessments might cost a business? You know, I think like a Microsoft or a larger company might be able to eat these costs, no problem. But just for small businesses, I was wondering how much one of these individual impact assessments might cost an employer?
I don't have that offhand, but you have a lot of people that are testifying here today. I know the Tech Institute is testifying. Matt Share is going to testify as well. That's a better question for them, but they're coming up.
Appreciate that. Thanks, Ed.
You're welcome.
Representative Goethe. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Yeah, so I have some questions on the AI bill and the others you came to testify about as well. So on the AI bill, I mean, one of my chief concerns, you know, you talk about human oversight. Of course, you know, vitally important. But at the end of the day, for me, I try to think about if an adverse decision is made or something that harms an employee, who's held accountable if a workplace is unsafe? And this decision, you know, an employer wants to say, well, it wasn't my decision. It was the AI. So can you maybe speak to accountability specifically? Not just like a human checkmark at the end of the process, but who's held accountable when, when, you know, bad decisions are made? Thank you.
The accountability could be multifaceted in that the developer, and that's part of the impact assessment, is, you know, them trying to initially figure out whether or not it can discriminate against someone and also the employer themselves as the deploying the system. And that's why a private right of action where it would allow the employee who's being discriminated against to actually go out and sue because they've been discriminated against and go through the process then.
Yeah. So do you see AI coming in and kind of overturning precedent in law that has been established for decades or maybe centuries to protect workers and to hold employers accountable? And this system being able to come in and kind of subvert that process?
I mean, AI is going, AI is here. It's coming extremely fast, faster than anyone realizes is what I've been noticing. I went out to the SAG-AFTRA and the National AFL-CIO and the AFL-CIO Tech Institute hold a conference every year in Las Vegas in conjunction with the Consumer Electronics Showcase. And I had the privilege to go out there, speak on a panel and talk about AI. But the stuff that I saw at the Consumer Electronics Showcase is going to completely revolutionize the way that we work. It's already developed. It's here and it's already being used. I mean, there's stories about call centers that use an AI algorithm to evaluate empathy in people's voices. Empathy in people's voices. There's, you know, we talked about the hiring process and it's not exactly dependable, but people still put it out there and deploy it because there's no discrimination mechanism that they're trying to, they're almost trying to rush into it rather than take the time to make sure that people are protected in order to, in the name of efficiency. So as far as the legal system goes, I think if people have the right to sue an employer and the employer knows that, that's a deterrent from them from rushing these systems in that are in some cases inherently unreliable, possibly discriminatory in nature. And it will give the employer some pause to do so. And that pause is what we need in order to protect workers from working in what could amount to be a completely dystopian workplace.
Thank you. Are there some areas that you see that accountability would become such an issue that you might even advocate for just banning the use of AI in certain, you know, areas of employment?
That's a tough question. Happy to have those conversations offline, but I mean, as long as there is human oversight in the end of it, and AI really is referred to often as a black box because we don't know what the algorithm is. We don't know what data it's using.
Well, that's, that's almost exactly my, my point. If we can't evaluate it, we don't know what it's doing. How can we ever write a law to have oversight over it?
But if they open it up and they're, they have that impact assessment and we're able to see what data they're collecting, what data they're using and how they're using it, then someone can adequately defend themselves against a discriminatory decision. So that's really where the balance is. I mean, the, the labor movement isn't against the use of AI, as I've said multiple times, but we want it to enhance work rather than completely, you know, monitor absolutely everything that you're doing in a way that discriminates against people. And then people don't have the ability to defend themselves because they can't look inside that black box where the algorithm is looking at certain things. It's almost impossible to defend yourself against something that you don't have knowledge of. And as long as we have that transparency with the employers and people are adequately able to defend themselves, there's some human oversight, a significant human oversight in the end, not just someone checking a box. That's what we're looking for in order to protect people's rights.
Okay. Thank you. And on the other bills you came here to testify about, I know you had some more details. I wonder if you could, you know, fill us in a bit further. Thank you.
As far as the apprenticeship ratio, I mean, the importance of apprenticeship, we're all well aware of. Proper training, safety standards, workforce development, the data is already being collected. The creation of the working group includes stakeholders with expertise to examine the apprenticeship ratio process, focus on applying industry knowledge and insights, and also the data driven decision making, which allows time to analyze the collected data, ensures decisions are formed, informed by facts and professional experience. The benefits of SB 1485 improved oversight, support for the stakeholders in a future ready workforce. Comptroller did a great job going through it. I think I covered that pretty well. As far as the unemployment benefits for para educators. So the federal government requires certain things when funding our unemployment system. They require a reasonable assurance of rehire for people that work in an educational setting. So, you know, our paras, our teachers, people that work directly for boards of education. And what they often do is at the end of the year, they would provide employees with what's called a reasonable assurance of rehire letter. So they will give the employees this letter and saying, we have a, you know, reasonable belief that you will be employed in the same or similar manner as in the fall. So during summer break, they would be unable to collect. What this bill says is that they need to not only inform the employees of that, but inform the Department of Labor. What often happens is, you know, a bunch of people will file, then they got to bring in the letters. If the DOL knows offhand, it just gives further information and clarity to the employees because it'll require that letter to go to DOL, not just the employees. Sometimes they don't get the letter and then they file. I've actually seen in a hearing before, the employer slide one of those letters across the table to the person. It's like, oh, here's the letter for reasonable assurance of rehire. And, you know, at that, it gets complicated, but at that point, they would have the reasonable assurance. And not before that, it requires notice to the employee. This would require notice to DOL as to who has the reasonable assurance and who does not.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Any other questions? Seeing none, I want to thank you for your testimony, sir.
Thank you.
All right. We're going to come back up to Senator Fazio. He is here. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Chair Wilson, ranking members, Representative Weir and Senator Sampson and good colleagues on the Labor Committee. I am here today to testify in regards to Bill 1485 regarding a task force regarding apprenticeship ratios and specifically testifying in favor of this committee and the General Assembly going further than just a task force and provide relief under the state's existing apprenticeship ratios. Listen, we all understand that we need to provide more economic opportunity in Connecticut, that we want to create more jobs in the trades for young people, that we need to lower the cost of living in this state and also create more infrastructure, more housing and more growth in the state of Connecticut. Providing relief under our state's restrictive apprenticeship ratios will do just that. I mean, if there's any stronger evidence that we should provide relief under the apprenticeship ratios and create more apprenticeships in the state of Connecticut, it's the fact that we have a more restrictive ratio for hiring under apprenticeships than we do on the actual job sites. The ratios that we have on the job sites are more reflective of safety standards and other vital considerations that our state would have than they would for the total payrolls, the, the actual hiring of apprentices, apprentices and full time workers in the state. My family comes from a long line of workers in the trades in unions before that they were full time journeymen in, in the building trades. However, they were apprentices. And if they had, you know, come across overly restrictive apprenticeship ratios, they might not have had those opportunities in the trades in the first place and to rise up to, to the middle class in, in the United States from, 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 from mere Italian immigrants. Providing that opportunity for young workers, especially in a day and age when more and more young people want to go around the highly expensive and less practical college process. Providing opportunity to, to do good work, to earn a wage, to build skills is vital for not only welcoming people to our state, but growing our entire economy. We can do that by, by, by making the hiring ratio for apprentices equal to the on the job ratios for apprentices at one to one. This will be good for our unions in the state because it will fill the roles of our unions in the state. It will be good for our housing sector where we need to create more housing and more affordable housing by creating more people in the industry who have the skills to build the houses. Can it, it will be good for economic opportunity and economic growth in a state that has seen too little of it. And across the country, the building trades now have more overall workers in the workforce than they did before the Great Recession. In the state of Connecticut, we have fewer. I think the time for reform is now. We've been talking about it long enough. We know all the considerations involved. And so I hope we can come together, not only on this committee, but in this state Capitol this year to provide the relief and the reform we need for growth and opportunity for all. Thank you. Happy to take any questions.
All right. Any questions? Representative Weir.
Thank you, Senator, for your comments. And very briefly, I agree with you that there is a need, you know, in the industry. And quite frankly, just look forward to having more discussion on this topic and moving, moving this, this particular bill forward, whatever shape it takes. But I agree with you that there is, there's a need for skilled workers and look forward to being part of that solution.
Thank you, Representative.
All right. Any other questions? Representative Canino?
Thank you, Senator, for coming out today. Just one quick question. So you mentioned that we want to get to this, to a point where it mirrors the actual hiring ratios for the job, which I think you said one to one. What is the current ratio now? And that, that is, that is at issue? And can you just go into a little bit more detail about how that impacts businesses? You know, the, the resources that, that takes?
The, the hiring ratio is more restrictive than the, the on the job, job site ratio. So for smaller companies, it's just one apprentice to one journeyman. But for larger companies, it approaches only one apprentice for, for three full time journeymen. But on the actual job site, the ratio is one to one. Meaning when the actual kind of safety and efficacy of a job site and doing the job is concerned, the state of Connecticut says it's okay to have one apprentice for one full time licensed journeyman. But for hiring overall, we're saying you can only hire one, for a bigger firm, you can only hire one apprentice for three journeymen. I'm not sure what the arguments for that are when we say for, for safety and efficacy on the job, we have a one to one ratio. That means we can hire fewer apprentices. We could train fewer young people in the state of Connecticut. It actually means we grow the union roles at a lower rate in the state of Connecticut. I think that all the evidence points to the fact that we need to loosen the hiring ratio in order to create more skilled workers and, and more opportunity for young people in the state.
I appreciate that answer and I think that delineates the problem here very clearly that we can, if, if one to one is okay when safety is at play, we shouldn't be using these ratios to artificially inhibit companies' abilities to hire, train these young people for our future. So thank you.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you. Any other questions? Representative Senator Sampson, I'm so sorry.
You're all good, man. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator, good to see you up there.
Thank you, Senator.
I don't have a lot to add. My colleagues already asked some important questions. And I think that this is something that we've been talking about for the last several years. So we know what's going on pretty well. I guess I would just ask your reaction. You know, I get some testimony in favor of this policy and I get some folks opposed. And I think in some ways it has something to do with the various industries. I, you know, I heard from some plumbers, I heard from some electrician, electricians. Is, is it your vision that we should be trying to create a ratio that's, that's based on the need in our current work environment in the state? Or how do you see it working? I, you know, this bill is just a study and I, You know, this bill is just a study, and I know you said we should go further, and I agree. I'm just, I'm kind of torn about exactly how to go forward and whether we should just say it should be one-to-one, or it should be one-to-two, or what, you know, or should we be trying to come up with some other system that adapts to what's going on in the world? Through you, Mr. Chairman.
First of all, I think task forces and studies actually do serve a purpose. When you're trying to figure out an answer to something that you don't know, a topic that might be extremely complicated or that we haven't explored as a general assembly, this is not one of those topics. We know the factors at play. It's been much discussed for many years, decades in the state of Connecticut. I think what the exact correct ratio is for hiring is probably a difficult question that would probably be better answered by a competitive market, competitive and well-regulated marketplace and individuals making free choices in our interstate economy. However, for practical purposes, we do have a job site ratio that that is more flexible than the hiring ratio. And I think is a fair kind of starting point for having the discussion of what the hiring ratio should be. So I'm for making things better, not for making things perfect. And I think one-to-one is a ratio that works on the job site, so it would work well and make things better in Connecticut if that were also the hiring ratio.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. That's a great answer. I appreciate that. And like you, I believe the market forces is always the answer. Chances are, we're not going to get there, but I do agree. Job site ratio seems seems to make sense from a safety standard. Why not use it universally? I really appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. We have any other questions? Seeing none, I want to thank you for coming to testify. You have a great rest of your day.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, too.
Next up, we have Kim Glassman.
Good morning. Vice Chairman Wilson, Ranking Member Sampson, Ranking Member Weir, members of the Labor Committee. My name is Kimberly Glassman. I'm the Director of the Foundation for Fair Contracting. I thank you for allowing me to testify before you this morning in support of two bills. I'm going to start with Senate Bill 1488. I know you heard from the comptroller this morning, and you have my written testimony on this bill. I'm just going to briefly summarize that the Foundation for Fair Contracting was founded here in Connecticut in 1994 for the purpose of monitoring public construction projects for compliance with certain laws and regulations that govern the construction industry, particularly Davis Bacon and prevailing wage. We have about today, at this moment, we have about 23 wage complaints pending with the Department of Labor, and that's not including stop-work complaints that we've brought forward to the Labor Department. The Labor Department has been phenomenal. They do are doing more with less every single day. And what Senate Bill 1488 does is it just provides another tool for enforcement that we think will be used rarely. But we think in very egregious circumstances where the Labor Department is unable, through their own enforcement mechanisms, to to claw back restitution, recover restitution or back wages for workers, recover civil penalties. This is a great tool for the Labor Department to have at their at their fingertips. And we also applaud the comptroller for for bringing this bill forward to the committee, so we do urge your support on this bill. I also wanted to speak on Senate Bill 1485. Again, I do have written testimony that is more exhaustive on this bill. I hope that you can take some moments to to peruse that written testimony. And I I really want to specifically thank Ranking Member Weir for proactively reaching out to my organization and its affiliates to have a conversation and a discussion about this issue. I don't agree with Senator Fazio respectfully. I think that it's not clear what the right direction is on this, which is why this legislature, you, adopted in 2023 language that was in the budget that would direct the Labor Department's Office of Apprenticeship Training to put out a form every year to every sponsor of a construction-related apprenticeship program in the state of Connecticut. There are about 1,800 registered apprenticeship programs in construction in the licensed trades and the general trades, and asking those sponsors to report back to the Department of Labor certain metrics. We can't solve a problem if we don't know what the problem is. And right now, all we're hearing is arbitrary arguments from one side of this discussion. So this data that the Department of Labor is collecting shows you very important information. How many journey persons do these sponsors have? How many apprentices do these sponsors have? What is the completion rates of these programs?
Ms. Glassman, your time is almost up. Please conclude your remark.
What is the problem that we're trying to solve? And so I appreciate Representative Weir for bringing forward this discussion. We do offer a number of substantive amendments or substantive changes to this bill that would address the racial relief application process within the Office of Apprenticeships, within the Department of Labor's Office of Apprenticeships. So we do hope that we can work with you on possible substitute language. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Weir.
Thank you, Kim. Look forward to the continuing dialogue. In my short time in the building here, we have heard about this issue, you know, from from both sides, and it seems like we've got one group over here, one group over here. Neither one is really willing to. Well, we're at an impasse, so I look forward to any incremental progress we can make on improving, you know, the the situation for all those involved, and certainly appreciate your input and collaboration. I hope that we will be able to get get somewhere on this this year, and I appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Representative Hughes, followed by Representative Gauthier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So thank you for your testimony, Kim, and delineating that data that is already being collected. Does your amendments to this bill? It's, I mean, this bill is a working group, so I'm confused as to what the amendments are suggesting.
Sure, sure. I mean, look, I don't want to necessarily read out my testimony. I want to be respectful of everybody's time here and I and respectful of everybody else who wants to testify today. But I will say that we appreciate that there's a working group option here. But we also recognize, and I want to be very clear, my affiliates are very willing to have discussions, open to making compromises, have always been, there's never, they've never been a stick in the mud here. So what I've heard from my affiliates is they recognize that the racial relief application process, which is a subcommittee of the State Apprenticeship Council within the Department of Labor, that that process is in many ways arbitrary. It's, they don't have prescriptive guidelines of how to make determinations. So in my testimony, I say, hey, there's clearly some issues with this process. Let's fix them. And by the way, the work, this, the the ratio was changed in 2017. It's not three-to-one. It's one-to-one for the first three. That was a law that was changed in this legislature in 2017. So I just want to be very clear. When when you're hearing from legislators saying, oh, this three-to-one, it's not. It is one-to-one for the first three hires. That was a law that you guys changed. And with that law change, the there was a working group just to study the ratio that was created with that law. That working group met. And from those meetings, there was a lot of discussion over the racial relief application process within the Department of Labor. And my affiliates heard loud and clear that this is a process that is not working well for particularly, I want to say particularly non-union contractors, just because union contractors haven't used this process as much. But they they heard that this is a process that's not working. They offered to the legislature every year, hey, there are consensus items here to make this process work better. Let's adopt these first and see if we can make this process work better before we do a sweeping change to the law. Because this isn't a one-size-fits-all problem, and it's not a one-size-fits-all solution. And we were told no, and no, and no, because we are not the stick in the mud, I would argue. I would argue that maybe other folks advocating on this issue are. And so I very much thank Ranking Member Weir. I thank the ranking members on the General Law Committee who have said, why don't we start with where there's consensus? Why don't we start with making substantive changes to this process and seeing if that relieves any of the issues that were that the legislature is hearing? And so in my written testimony, I have laid out, bullet-pointed a number of substantive, what we think are substantive changes to the racial relief application process so that contractors, which already have a process, they can go through today to say, hey, we need to hire additional apprentices outside the ratio, and the Department of Labor gets those applications, and by and large, they are approved. But if that process isn't working, let's make it work. For example, right now, they have to print off the form, fill it out by hand, scan it in, email it or mail it in. I mean, this is the 21st century. They should be able to do this all online. Exactly. They shouldn't have to advertise on CT hires for 30 days before being able to put in a application. This should be a more prescriptive process for those who are appointed to whatever the subcommittee is. We can change that subcommittee, add more people to the subcommittee. But it should be a more prescriptive process. These are just some ideas that I've spoken with about Representative Weir, and I wanted to make sure that I included in my written testimony, but certainly we're open to additional discussion on this.
Great. Thank you so much for clarifying that. It sounds like there are some consensus ideas about streamlining and updating the relief process application. Maybe can be done through some technical changes before convening another working group. I'm not opposed to another working group. I just want to build on the work that's already been done and on the data that we're already getting. So so it sounds like there there is some, you know, there's some hope there, I hope, to to build on that work and to build on that data and to streamline the process. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. Representative Gauthier?
Thank you. That was largely my question. Thank you.
Excellent. So one question that I have is, we know that these apprenticeship programs have completion rates governed and the data is collected by DOL. Can you tell me what that data or what the findings of a lot of that tells us kind of right now around this problem?
Sure. Thank you for the question, Vice Chair Wilson. So like I said, there's about 1,800 sponsors of construction-related apprenticeship programs in Connecticut. It could change, it could be a different number today, so I don't want to be held to it. I don't want to speak for the Department of Labor. But our organization had FOYed information. There were about 1,200 or so responses. So about two-thirds of the forms have come in to the Department of Labor. Our affiliates with the plumbers and pipe fitters, Local 777, our affiliates are with the with IBW, Local 488, Local 35, Local 90. Those affiliates went through to look at HVAC contractors, electrical contractors, and determine sort of where folks are in terms of completion. And the numbers are stunning. And it is not surprising, based upon the information that's come in, why the proponents of the one-to-one are fighting so hard right now. Because it, once this data is available to all of you, it will be stunning how low these completion rates are of some of these apprenticeship programs. On average, the non-union apprenticeship programs that have sent in their forms on the HVAC and electrical side on average are around 25% completion. Just just to show you, on the union side, the Joint Apprenticeship Training Council programs have around 80 to 90% completion rates. So it's not surprising to me that this legislature is seeing such a concerted effort to make a sweeping change right now. Knowing that in 2023, you guys passed this law on the budget, data started coming in in 2020, in this last summer, 2024, that your that the your committee, the General Law Committee, Committees of Cognizance are grappling with with how to address these issues. It's not surprising why you're seeing such a such a strong, organized effort to make a change right now without input from the whole from the whole industry and all the industry partners, union, non-union, contractors, labor. Labor's never been invited to any working group outside of this building to discuss with with legislators how to address this issue. There have been some, there have been some some meetings where the labor side has never been asked to produce, to to give input. And so we think this is the right step, right? Why don't we start? We're not saying, don't do anything. If there's a problem, let's solve the problem. Let's start with analyzing the data that's come in. You got, the legislature certainly can request this data. You can have OLR, do can analyze it, come up with a report on it, maybe OPM can, so that it's not, you're not thinking it's biased or, you know, you can be more, you can have a more objective eyes on this data. Certainly, we we would encourage that. We would also support and continue working with Representative Weir, the rankings on the General Law Committee, to address the racial relief, the racial relief application process. I know General Law is considering taking this process out of the Department of Labor and putting it within the Department of Consumer Protections purview. We're open to having that discussion. We're 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 talking to both commissioners. You know, we're not saying no. We're saying, let's make sure that we are intentional, that we are strategic, and that we are not looking at this as a sweeping change without good data, without facts, information, and input from the entire industry.
Thank you. We have any other questions? Seeing none, I want to thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for your time.
Next up, we have Senator Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the, you know, Senator Kushner, obviously he's not here, but Representative Wilson, Representative Weir, and Senator Sampson. Listen, I sit on the Commerce Committee. I heard the testimonies that we had. We stayed pretty late that night, and I heard it from both sides, both sides. I heard it from the the private sector, and I heard it from the the unions in particular. And I just want to debunk some of this comments that you just heard. Listen, it is not a fair playing field. This argument has been going on for decades. It is unfair the way the way the system is set up right now. We're talking about the private sector that has certain, in certain ways, have been shackled to to growing their business or hiring apprentices compared to what the union model is. So if and if you want to ask me some questions, what I've learned about that, I'd be more than happy to to answer that for you. But listen, we have been hearing for decades now, particularly from the trades, as well as the manufacturing sector, about the grace tsunami that we that we we're approaching while we are here, because that conversation started X amount of years ago, literally 15 to 20 years ago, and they were telling us that we needed to look at our youth and start educating our youth to to fit what their needs were. So there's a work shortage, not only in the trades and the the manufacturing sector, but it is in every single business sector that we have. And we are trying to answer that, how do we, how do we develop a workforce? So to fill those needs, right? So the, you know, it's been slow, but it's 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 tedious, but it is happening. There's a paradigm shift that's happening in our education system to begin with, right? School districts have been hearing this sort of little drumbeat, right? Hey, listen, you're not educating our kids the way that you should be. You're not educating our kids because they're coming to us and they don't have the skills. And the trades is sort of saying the same thing, right? But this drumbeat has been getting louder and louder and we are slowly making some changes, including the education system. So what do we see? We do see school districts that are turning away from this model of success. You have to go to college, but and they're turning over to career paths that are exposing our kids to different certifications that they would need in trades or in maybe in the medical field, could be in, it's an array of fields. So certification, certain skills, and now they can go and actually go get a job that will be the beginning of their path to their careers. So it's tedious, but it is working. And they're also working with the business communities as well. They're bringing in their, the business community so that we can develop internships and apprenticeships with them. So they're being taken out of school, they're going to work, they're working in the field. Some are not getting paid, some are because they're still in high school, but they are, it's happening, it's happening. So the work still needs to be done. And I heard all the about, you know, I just heard the previous speaker talk about the workforce, you know, a study. Yes, they've been taking place for decades in this building and we've been doing nothing to change the ratios to make this into a level playing field.
Senator Martin, your time is almost up. Please include your remarks.
Sure. I'll get to the to to the point. This is just another study again. It is only a study. And from what I understand, most likely there will be some type of agreement made for us to to address the 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 workforce, the workforce needs of the ratios within this ratio. But you're talking about, they are only going to be addressing the waivers. Listen, this waiver issue here, it would be non-existent if there was a level playing field with with the two groups, the unions and the private sector. If you can fix that, the ratios, then you have no waivers. And you asked, you asked if, gee, do you have, where are the waiver problems coming from? It's coming from the private sector. It's coming from the private sector because they're forced to use the waiver process instead of do, having a one to one ratio like the unions have.
Thank you. Any questions? Representative Weir?
Thank you, Senator, for your testimony. I know we've spoken earlier about this and I I've heard much of the testimony that you've heard over the past couple of years. In agreement with you, there's an issue, I'm hoping, you know, I'm hoping certainly for more than a working group or a study comes out of this and that we, you know, I've talked with some of many of my colleagues, both sides of the aisle and just said, you know, we cannot continue to kick the can on this. I'm hoping that this is a step, an incremental step in the process. I don't know if there's anything else you want to conclude with with your time, but I just want to let you know that's where my my heart's at. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Weir. Yeah, maybe just a comment about what is happening to those our students who are leaving high school, maybe have spent some time in the tech, CTEC program. They are looking for an apprenticeship program. You have children whose families, who because they are being restricted by the journeyman three to one ratio, cannot even hire their their son or daughter to enter the trade as an apprentice so that they can start building their careers. So they have enough journeymen for the one to one, times three, right, one to one. So when it gets to their 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 family relative and they want to bring that child on, they can't because they don't have the requirement to go to three to one. But that's not only happening in small businesses, but that's happening in any, almost all the private sector, those that need to be required, that they, these these youths or these students are going on, they're going to CTEC school, they may be going on to one of the private schools, spending some money, only to find out that they can't get into a job because of the the companies that they've applied to have not been able to meet the ratio. Don't have the journeyman to meet the ratio. So the answer is not the waiver, the answer is changing the ratio from three, from three to one to one to one going forward. That's the answer. It's not this study, it's not addressing the waiver. That's the argument that's been used for decades by the unions so that they can just deter, defer, deter, just just let it go on. They're kicking it down the can while we suffer and these kids are suffering. Because now they can't, they can't get into into a good career path. And here we are spending all our time and energy of create, trying to create a work, solving the work shortage issue in various industries. And but yet this has been going on for years.
So I've got two questions. First one, kind of like I asked the last speaker. Have you had a chance to really look at some of the data around the completion rates and kind of the data that DOL has has collected?
I have not, because they only brought it to our attention, I think, when we were, they were testifying, hey, you got to wait for the data. And I've heard, I have heard, what I understand, I should say, regarding some of those that data. It's probably very skewed. And I'll say this, I'll give you an example, and that would be the, an apprentice who is hired one to one, but decides to leave, he's got maybe a hundred hours, he goes over to here to another company where he was able to find a job. So he's, his hours are good and he moves forward, but the company has got a black mark because gee, you started with somebody, but now they left. So now it's not a completion. Is that fair? No. And you can leave an employer for various reasons.
Thank you. Other question, I know you talked about the Commerce Committee. Could you delve into some of the, what the Commerce Committee's bill kind of looks like or what they're looking is that's different from what this is?
The bill that was, that was in front of us had to change, was changing the ratios from three to one to one to one. So currently, the ratios are one to one, up to three employee, three journeymen. And then if you want that fourth apprentice, right, you need to have three journeymen to one. Whoever heard of having three supervisors supervising an individual? Not in the world that I grew up in. I grew up in the construction family and there was a foreman for five up to 10. But I understand that things have changed, so it's bizarre that this ratio is inverted. It should be three apprentices, apprentices, apprentices to one journeyman. But we have what we have, one to one. All our Commerce Bill was doing was leveling the playing field, one to one for everybody. And the, and now from what I understand, it's becoming part of this waiver. It's it's very disappointing that it's turning into this waiver argument.
Thank you. Just I just wanted to kind of have that context as we're having this larger conversation. Any other questions? Seeing that, I want to thank you for your knowledge and coming and testifying before us and wishing you the rest.
Thank you, Representative Wilson. Thank you.
We also have our other lovely friend, Representative Ackert, you are up next.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Senator Kushner, Senator Cabrera, Senator Sampson, Representative Sanchez, Representative Wilson, Representative Weir and other members of Labor and Employees Committee. My name is Tim Ackert. I represent the 8th District, which includes Bolton, Columbia, Coventry, Lebanon, and Talon. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony and following today's agenda here. Raise Bill 1485, an act establishing a working group to study the apprenticeship ratio relief application process. Raise Bill, Senate Bill 1485 seeks to establish a working group to look at several different aspects of apprenticeship program for the trades and the application process. I'm opposed to this legislation for the, for a variety of reasons. In addition to being a state representative, I am a Connecticut E1 unlimited license holder and have been since 1987. For over three decades, my company continues to be a proud apprenticeship sponsor. I have been an apprenticeship instructor for New England Technical Institute in New Britain, now owned by Lincoln Tech. And today, I am a continuing educating instructor for the licensed electricians and have been since requirement was passed by this legislature. I'm not going to go on with the rest of my testimony. I want to address some of the, some of the things that were mentioned earlier. I, as a sponsor, had to fill out that that survey that was presented to us. The survey is, could be better in how we, but one of the first questions on the survey is what percentage did your, did your company complete for percentage wise? Unfortunately, and this is no disrespect to the Department of Labor, there's about nine questions on the survey. The first would be in your completion rate. So I called the Department of Labor and each of our sponsors, we get a representative. And I asked the representative, I'd like to ask you questions on the survey. He goes, unfortunately, we are told not to answer any of your questions. I said, well, the first question asks about my percentage of completion. Is it a percentage number? Is it how many? And he goes, he said, Tim, I can't answer the question. We were told not to answer the question. So if somebody said they completed one apprentice that year, what would their percentage be? One. And unfortunately, that's what happened with many of these surveys. Who would say that they had a 3% percentage rate? So we need to really look at each of these surveys when we start to think about it. And regarding the ratio, as I've been a strong supporter, as you know, of eliminating a hiring ratio. There is no other business in the state of Connecticut that limits hiring, except the licensed trades, zero. You can't, I can't even comprehend this. I happen to sit with our good governor at a at a restaurant and I brought this to his attention. He said, we have a hiring ratio? I said, yes, three to one. He goes, is that three apprentices to each journey person? I'm not asking to go that far, Governor. He says, well, you need to get with the Office of Workforce Strategies, Dr. Valeries, and and so we can do about that. But every time we bring this ratio up, the pushback is from one group, unfortunately. The people that have to fill out the hiring ratio relief paperwork are only the merit shop companies. Because there's multiple sponsors, thousands of sponsors in the state of Connecticut, when a union has a sponsor and everybody falls under that that umbrella. So we're different animals between the union and the non-union in terms of the ratio relief. Think about what you're asking someone to do. I want permission to hire somebody. That's what we're asking in a ratio relief form. We want to fix it, make it better. It's still a permission slip to put somebody on your payroll, to give somebody a career. In Rhode Island, there's a contractor on the border of Rhode Island, one of our good representatives down in Stonetown represents him. He goes, I'm just moving the company across the street, across the border. Our ratio in Rhode Island is one to one. Seems to be working perfectly there. They actually want to go to the three to one the other way. I just, it just, is really unconscionable to think that we limit people that want to put, they're going to say, well, they're bad actors, they're not doing it right. Over 80% of the apprentices in the trade right now are merit shop workers, 80%. Might be 83 for electrical, 79 for HVAC. We're the ones getting the job, getting the workers in the field. I want everybody to have more workers, union, non-union, whoever it is. I want people on a payroll in the state of Connecticut. That's what I want, to have a hiring ratio. I know in this committee, you've worked with a lot of different things. I know the warehouse workers, your worker's strong, I do, and trying to get some protection for them. Are you limiting them hiring? Maybe we don't put people in warehouses working. Maybe we should limit them. So I struggle with why we continue to have this conversation.
Representative Ackert, your time is almost up. Please include your remarks.
I am done. And if you have any questions, as compassionate, just as the, just as passionate as some of the people before me, but thank you.
We appreciate it. Any questions? Representative Weir?
Not really a question, but I thank you for your testimony. I did not get a chance to hear the Commerce testimony. I know we've spoken about this topic many times over the years and you're living it. You know, you're living it. None of us up here are, are, well, I don't think there's, I'm just going to say, I don't believe there's anybody else who's in your situation as an open shop employer. I hear you loud and clear and I'm hoping that we can, we can bring some sort of progress to this situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? First, I want to ask the same question that I've asked the last several. You know, you started to touch on the complete, completion rates and the survey. And so kind of just getting getting back to that, giving you a chance to kind of complete that thought. Have you had a chance to look at some of the data from that and if so, or if not, just commenting on it?
Yeah, I think of that. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have not looked at the data. Again, I brought up the concerns with what I heard back from what the data report was. And it was sprung on, and I want to say sprung on, but you know, the the contractors out there, I don't, I don't believe everybody submitted it in terms of understanding it. But when I, as somebody on my side, in my job, being on both sides of it, called the Department of Labor and said, I need to get information on how I should be filling this form out. And they said, I can't help you, Representative. So there's a number of questions, ethnicity, gender, things that you typically wouldn't ask an employee anyways that's on it. But the hiring ratio, that the completion ratio was not clear. And I think that if that, we're going to continue to use this process and that, then that makes sense that we should do that. But I could tell you, IAC New England, one of the largest trade organizations and teaching is at 90%. Their, their, their students are at 90% and they can provide that information. But that's one of the largest ones. HVAC is similar to that also. And I don't want it to be, we seem to make this a competition between union and non-union because we're on the battle side of this issue. I want to make sure that, and I know that the the unions typically, in my trade, it's a five-year completion where we're a four-year completion. And it is a case where, in some cases, as a good senator before me mentioned, that an individual might be working for me because, listen, I'm a small contractor, right? Maybe they want to come with me for two years and do service calls and do some residential wiring, but they want to go do some big work. You got to leave and go and get the training. Our criteria to, for electrical apprentice is is a wide range of criteria that you have to complete. And you might not get that from one contractor. And I could tell you what, and no disrespect to IBW, if they're doing commercial work for five years, they haven't put a troubleshoot a residential property either. So they get the training in the school, but it's not, sometimes work, you actually have to have hours in each area to complete your apprenticeship. So it's, it's, it's hard to get that. So when people do leave, I respect that when, if someone has come to me and has left and went on to another one, another job, I've been happy with that I complete most of mine in my business. And I think most of the people out there are doing the same.
And kind of just piggybacking off of kind of that, the last comment, where we talk about, you know, you, of course, live this day in and day out. And so within this conversation, what would you find is your hardest struggle with possibly growing your business or just the conversation over the paperwork?
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for the question again, Mr. Chair. So what I find right now is that in my, in my business, it's hiring. So when we have an aging workforce, you know, most people can say that. And there is a younger blood coming. I got to say, I can start to see that I think we've flipped the tide and you got to go to college, you got to go to college, you got to go to college. But in the Commerce Committee, there was so many people that came and testified, parents of of the students. And how many times that that student has called and couldn't get a job. They called multiple employers, large and small, and they said, the answer they get most of the time is, we would love to hire you, but we don't have a slot for you because the state has a law about hiring ratios. So the biggest thing is, you know, is that we're an aging workforce, we actually have less. We actually have less licensures in the state of Connecticut than we did twenty years ago. And we have more people in Connecticut and more work in Connecticut. So I think the biggest thing is that we, let's build a stronger workforce for the future.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Seeing that, I want to thank you for coming to testify and you have a good rest of your day.
Thank you, thank you for all that you do.
Next, we have Crystal Wies.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, Co-Chairs Kushner and Sanchez and members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. My name is Crystal Wise and I'm the Innovation Policy and Program Manager at the AFL-CIO Tech Institute. And the Tech Institute is a nonpartisan organization that's affiliated with the AFL-CIO, which is a national, International Federation of sixty-three Unions that represents over fifteen million workers across the country. We seek to provide workers with a voice in technological developments, including artificial intelligence. I'm here this morning to speak on fourteen eighty-four. As we've already heard from Connecticut AFL-CIO President Hawthorne, the impact of unregulated AI is rapidly transforming workplaces. It leaves workers unprotected from electronic surveillance, from privacy invasions, from discrimination, and the erosion of labor rights. These immediate threats of unregulated AI are very real in the lives of everyday workers. In response to this, the AFL-CIO and the Tech Institute has created a framework for worker-centered, union-led AI policy. And in order to make sure that workers are protected from AI, there has to be protections around, for workers and consumers against discrimination and bias. There has to be transparency so that we know when and how companies are using AI to make key decisions about people. There has to be strong, robust accountability and enforcement in legislation. And workers must, and their unions must be a part of the process of both developing technology and implementing technology. And so we're really grateful to see that many of these have been included in SB fourteen eighty-four. And particularly, it addresses discrimination and potential harm to users with transparency requirements around disclosure, requires notification, and provides for an appeal process. It also provides against electronic monitoring by employers. However, in order to make sure that the bill is robust in the protection that it offers as intended, we respectfully request a, a couple of friendly amendments to just solidify some definitions and create some meaningful enforcement. So for example, there's some, in my written testimony, you can see that we've made suggestions around how to shore up some of the definitions to make sure that private data is fully protected, to present, to prevent continuous surveillance, to provide broad protections across multiple classifications of workers and different groups of folks that might be discriminated against, to make sure that human oversight is meaningful and not just a rubber stamp, and to remove unnecessary exclusions. We also very strongly recommend adding a private right of action that will allow workers to file lawsuits against employers and responsible supervisors if they fail to comply with legislation's requirements. This makes sure that workers have access to redress, and it also helps in shift the incentive structures so that developers and deployers slow down and develop more responsible technology before just pushing things onto the market. So I thank you for your time and your consideration and welcome any questions about specific amendments or, or any other issues.
Thank you. If you have any questions. Seeing that, I want to thank you for your testimony. Next up, we have Matt Scherer. I think he's online. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Co-Chairs and members of the Committee. My name is Matt Scherer, and I lead the Workers' Rights Project at the Center for Democracy and Technology. CDT is a nonprofit devoted to advancing civil rights and civil liberties in the digital age. I want to commend the Committee for their work on this thoughtful and excellent bill. I'll note that my comments today are primarily focused on how this bill would apply in the private sector. Across the country, employers are increasingly using electronic surveillance and management systems to monitor and collect data on workers, as well as automated decision systems, or ADSs, to make decisions that can alter the courses of workers' lives and livelihoods. Companies often claim that these tools improve efficiency and productivity. Too often, however, these systems are used in ways to discriminate, erode job quality, threaten workers' health and safety, invade their privacy, widen the power gap between employers and workers, target workers who speak up and otherwise harm workers. Companies use surveillance most frequently in lower-wage jobs where workers are disproportionately from historically marginalized groups. Meanwhile, bias, as well as simple ineffectiveness, is a persistent problem with automated decision systems, as is the fact that many systems simply don't work. Workers are often not even aware when these technologies are being used and rarely have the opportunity to challenge unfair discriminatory decisions made using them. SB fourteen eighty-four would provide crucial protections to workers in the face of the threats posed by these technologies by regulating both electronic surveillance and automated decision systems. The bill would dramatically improve protections for Connecticut workers through a couple of key provisions that I want to highlight. First, it would limit the circumstances under which employers can use technology to surveil workers and collect their data, and would require any such collection to be narrowly tailored to the purpose for which it's being collected. This will protect workers from being subjected to unnecessarily intrusive or constant surveillance, which research has shown is a threat not only to their economic security, but to their health and safety. Second, it would require companies to provide notice of electronic monitoring and conduct impact assessments when deploying automated decision systems. This is essential because workers often don't know when employers are using these systems, which makes it impossible for them to protect themselves, even under existing labor and civil rights laws. And we also don't know what steps companies are currently taking in order to ensure that their systems are complying with the law. A few provisions in the bill should be amended to close potential loopholes, and on that front, I'll be submitting written testimony with some friendly amendments. Most notably, the term substantial factor should be eliminated or at the very least defined, and a couple of the exemptions that are borrowed from the EU AI Act should be removed. In both these cases, leaving the language as it is would give less scrupulous companies too much leeway to effectively opt themselves out of the law. Additionally, I would suggest the bill be amended to provide workers with an opportunity to vindicate their own rights in court when companies violate the law. As I mentioned, I'll discuss these in my written testimony, which I'll be submitting shortly, in the hopes that they can be addressed through amendments before the bill reaches the floor. Thank you again, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I believe that there's a question earlier about impact assessments.
All right, any questions? You want, well, I'll give you the floor to go ahead and answer the question about the impact assessments.
Yeah, I believe that somebody asked earlier what the cost of the impact assessments under this bill would be. I used to be, before I was in my current role, a management-side employment lawyer. The cost of impact assessments, like the one this would require, where you essentially analyze a new decision system and determine whether it would violate any laws. Number one, that is relatively standard practice, or at least it should be, before you roll any tool out. You want to make sure that you're not about to commit legal violations. The cost of doing that is variable for new technologies that have never been used before and for which nobody has conducted an impact assessment that you can turn to. You know, it can be relatively expensive. It can be in the high five digits in terms of dollars. But that's at the very beginning, early adopter phase, and that's why in some of these, you know, bills that I've seen pop up that require companies to do things like that for the first time, there's an on-ramp where in the first year, only larger companies are subject to it. So that by the time the second year rolls around, different AI auditing compliance companies already kind of have the muscle memory of knowing what needs to be done, and that can bring the cost down dramatically to, you know, the very low five digits and sometimes even four digits. And that's in, you know, and certainly in subsequent years after a company's already conducted the impact assessment once, and you have the procedure in place, the cost is dramatically less in subsequent years. But again, I would argue that responsible companies should already be checking their tools to make sure that they're complying with the law.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any other questions? Seeing that, I want to thank you for your testimony. You have a good rest of your day.
Thank you.
Next up is Stuart Sasev School.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. You have the floor.
Excellent, thank you. Good afternoon, members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. My name is Stuart Savical, and I'm the Chief of Staff for AFT Connecticut. I sit before you today in support of Senate Bill fourteen eighty-four, an act implementing artificial intelligence protections for employees. With this bill, the General Assembly continues to show leadership around the regulation of artificial intelligence, which is of particular importance, given the chaos in Washington, DC. While we support the aims of the bill and much of the bill's language, like some of the previous speakers, we respectfully ask that a few minor modifications be made to reflect the realities of the modern workplace. First, we appreciate the care that has gone into defining the terms used in this bill. When it comes to protecting workers and especially offering protections from emerging technologies, the particulars are extremely important. With that in mind, we suggest the definition of electronic monitoring be altered to reflect the realities of work post-COVID. As written, the bill defines electronic monitoring as, quote, "the collection of information on an employer's premises concerning employees' activities or communications by any means other than direct observation," end quote. According to the Connecticut Data Collaborative, sixteen percent of Connecticut workers reported working from home in 2022. A definition which limits electronic monitoring to only that monitoring which occurs on the employer's premises arguably excludes some of the most pervasive forms of monitoring, the so-called BOSSware that we've also heard from, or heard about earlier today. In general law, AFT Connecticut previously provided comment on portions of this bill which were similar to SB two. We'd like to reiterate the potential for abuse of the human review loophole. While that language in this bill is preferable, we would suggest the phrase, quote, "without sufficient human review," end quote, from the definition of high-risk artificial intelligence systems. This is on lines one thirty-three and thirty-four. Unless loopholes for human review are removed from the legislation, companies selling high-risk artificial intelligence systems will simply require the human review in their Terms of Service, effectively exempting themselves from the well-thought-out procedures in this legislation. Our state's residents deserve better than legislation which can be defeated by fine print. We also urge you to consider allowing enforcement of all provisions in this law through a private right of action. We know from states like Illinois that biometric privacy laws with private rights of action create disincentives for violators. While many lawmakers are reluctant to create new private rights of action, the vital protections envisioned in this bill are important enough to be enforced through the vigilance that private litigation incentives create. Additionally, we urge this bill to make clear that many uses of AI in the workplace constitute mandatory subjects of bargaining under MIRA and CIRA. Making artificial intelligence a mandatory subject of collective bargaining is not some roadblock to incorporating emerging technologies in the workplace. Rather, it is a policy that ensures those who best understand workplace processes, the workers themselves, must be consulted as these technologies are introduced to the workforce. Thank you for your time, and I'll stand for any questions.
Any, any questions? Seeing that, I want to thank you for your testimony. I'm going to turn it over to.
Thank you.
Rep Sanchez.
Thank you, Representative. Up next, we have James Demetriades.
Good afternoon, members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. Can you guys hear me okay?
We can.
I'm seeing none, it's great. Good to be before you again. I feel like at this point, we're old friends, but my name again is James Demetriades. I am an attorney at the firm Ferguson Doyle in Chester, and I'm here today on behalf of our client, AFT Connecticut, and their affiliated locals that speak about raised bill seventy-one ninety-five. This bill is about the reasonable assurance of return to work and the requirement that boards of educations and other educational employees provide to Department of Labor a list of the employees that will be, that have received a reasonable assurance of return to work for the following semester. You know, as somebody who litigates these issues and have, have done dozens of appeals in Department of Labor surrounding the issues of reasonable assurance, this continues to be one of the biggest hurdles, and it's time-consuming and difficult. The issue is, our paraprofessionals, who are some of our hardest-working employees in our school, often do not receive a reasonable assurance of return to work until halfway through the summer, or sometimes even before, weeks before the school year starts. What this statute tries to do, or the statutory change tries to do, is make sure that DOL has that list at the beginning of the summer so that when parers apply for unemployment, DOL will know whether or not they have the reasonable assurance of return to work. This will save the employers, DOL, and the employees time, money, and resources that can be better spent elsewhere and avoid having to go through a long and factual-based appeals process. And I also think it's a matter of fundamental freedom, fairness, I apologize, fairness, for the paraprofessionals. They are left in a limbo or purgatory of not knowing whether or not their services are going to be needed for the following school year. And I think that this will be a way of just streamlining and clarifying it. And if the, what I've also noticed is there is a, not a uniform application of reasonable assurance across the state. Every district tends to have their own form of how they inform employees about a reasonable assurance. Having them be able to provide DOL lists ten days before the end of the school year or the end of the term will provide regularity across all school districts and hopefully make it easier so there aren't superfluous claims being made for unemployment benefits so that our paraprofessionals, who I believe are the champions of our school districts, aren't left in this purgatory and limbo about they don't know what their job status is, and it'll reduce the expense and time everyone has to spend at adjudication hearings for DOL. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have on this bill.
Any questions of the Committee? Seeing that, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Up next, we have James Bandry Alexander.
Is that better? Good morning or afternoon, as the case may be. I'm James Bandry Alexander. I'm here with Connecticut Drivers United, and we had spoken with the clerk, and Senator Kushner had indicated an interest in us presenting as a panel this morning, which is why you may see people around me.
Well, well, that's fine. So several of the folks, if they would like to, if they're listed here, can actually sit along the.
Fantastic.
Along the, no, you could, you could sit in these chairs here. Sorry, I was not clear.
So to manage this, what, what I think we're going to do is, we're going to start, I'm going to say a few words. We're going to turn it over to Dan Ocampo, who is our attorney, and we'll talk about the bill language on the TNC bill. And rather than having all the drivers testify, they're really here to answer your questions. There will be testimony in the written record. There already is some testimony, but it was indicated to us there may be an interest in that format as possibly more efficient and a way for you to really engage with drivers one-on-one about particular questions you have. So I'm going to open up, I'm not going to read my testimony out loud, but I have submitted written testimony. I'm a special advisor to Connecticut Drivers United, who I've been with since they started five or six years ago in this state, as a response to the continuing degradation of standards amongst Uber and Lyft drivers. That was the origin of the organization, and now there are fifteen hundred members of Connecticut Drivers United who are both rideshare and delivery drivers. There have been, you all are aware that there have been bills in this committee and in the legislature for the last four or five years that we've, as an organization, have been working on with you. And I wanted to just highlight a few things that have changed the context from past discussions. The first is that Comptroller Scanlon released the report that he mentioned in his, his testimony a few weeks ago, which really lays out how the issue of rideshare and delivery driver rights is tied to fairness for taxpayers, fairness for the public, and also safety on our roads. There is an alignment between conditions of rideshare and delivery drivers and the interests of people in the state of Connecticut that I think is highlighted in Comptroller Scanlon's report. Other thing, another major thing to understand about the changing context is that states all around us have now passed protections to workers. And in those other states, the companies have celebrated these advances forward, these advances. In Massachusetts, there's now a comprehensive suite of rights available to rideshare and delivery drivers around pay standards, anti-discrimination, transparency, all the issues that we care about here in Connecticut, too. Those rights exist next door in Massachusetts and in New York City, in Chicago, in Washington State, and other places. So there's a evolving landscape and a pattern. In states where drivers organize for their rights and win legislation, often the companies are opposed to it, and then when they, the legislation passes, often the companies celebrate those accomplishments and recognize those accomplishments as being very beneficial for the industry. And I'm going to leave it there for now and introduce, actually, I see. actually, I see, uh, Ray is here. Uh, Ray is a driver from Connecticut and maybe he'll say a few words. And then, uh, Dan Ocampo will say a few words and then we'll open it up to questions and answers if that's all right with, uh, you. Okay.
Yeah. Oh, good morning, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the Labor Committee. My name is Ray Phillips. I'm a rideshare driver for Lyft. I live in Hartford. And I support, uh, the bill HB fifty-four seven zero. Um, I've been driving for a long time, since I was like sixteen years old and I, I thought that, you know, driving is a good profession. I mean, we are, we are drivers here that take people to work. We are important part of the, the wheel that keeps it turning. You know, we take people to work, take them back home. Okay, there's a lot of concerns with, you know, with Lyft, these rideshare drivers. A lot of folks don't realize, you know, what we really go through. Some of my concern is, you know, pay. And, you know, rate of pay, they must be standard. And also like evening shifts, night shifts. There's no premium on that. One, two, three o'clock in the morning, we'd be getting three-dollar rides. Can't even buy a cup of coffee. You know, you ask to some of the customers, "How much you pay for this ride?" $10. And we get three. We provide everything. Your car, your insurance, your time, your gas, they, they buy nothing for you. And, uh, most of the times they take more of the money than you get. I remember, you know, like a couple of years ago, there was, this is the first job in America I have that, as time go by, your rate of pay drops. Most other jobs, every year you get the high, this one, it goes down. Two years ago, they was giving you like eighteen dollars to go to the airport. Now you're getting eleven and twelve dollars. You talk to the senior drivers who, you know, was here before you, seven, eight years, they would tell you, "Man, we should come out here in five hours, we can make two hundred dollars." Now some days we are out there eleven, twelve hours barely to make a hundred dollars. It's tough to do this job and maintain a family. Very tough. So, you know, I beg you guys, please look into this situation. I mean, it's, it's really tough on the drivers. Really, really tough. Well, I know that's the right thing to do, so I'm asking you guys to do the right thing. Help us out if you need it. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairs, members of the committee. Um, my name is Dan Ocampo. I'm an attorney at the National Employment Law Project, um, a national research and advocacy organization that works on labor and employment issues, uh, facing low-wage workers. Um, and we work extensively at the federal, state, and local level on policy issues concerning app-based workers. Um, and I've worked closely with Connecticut Drivers United in recent years. Um, I'm here to testify in qualified support of, uh, SB fourteen eighty-seven. Um, in, in the last few years, Uber has turned out record profits. How? By squeezing workers and consumers. When it entered the market, Uber told drivers it would take a commission or a service fee of ten percent per ride. Then it was twenty percent. Now it's close to forty percent on average. And for individual rides, can be as high as fifty percent or higher. Uh, and according to the best data available, drivers around the country are taking home about eleven dollars an hour on average. And I'd ask the committee, does that really seem appropriate? Uh, now, this bill doesn't really address that fundamental issue. It addresses a threshold question, which is, what disclosures do companies need to make about these practices? Currently, the answer is essentially none. Driver pay and consumer fares are not set according to any discernible metrics like mileage or time, nor are they tethered one to the other. Both are set by, uh, opaque AI-driven algorithms. Um, and they're variable and individualized driver-to-driver and consumer-to-consumer. Um, drivers have no idea why they're paid, what they're paid, and limited transparency as to what consumers are charged for their services. All this bill would do is require some of this basic transparency. Now, I think a, a real transparency bill, and this is something that Comptroller Scanlon suggested earlier, a real transparency bill would need to go further. At the very least, um, it would require that the data collected um, is reported also to the Department of Labor and the Department of Labor takes it into consideration to formulate a pay standard or a recommendation for a pay standard. Um, because as Ray was saying, you know, that's the first, most fundamental issue for, for these workers. Um, because transparency just, just isn't enough on its own. It still leaves Connecticut drivers essentially without a floor of workplace protections, unique among workers in the state in that, and much worse off than drivers in New York and Massachusetts, where they now have a, a minimum wage and a basic set of, um, of workplace protections. And it's not just there. In, uh, Washington, in Minnesota, in Colorado, elsewhere, policymakers, uh, have established some basic protections for this critical workforce. Um, and I think, you know, the question it raises for this is, um, why can't Connecticut follow suit and do the same? Um, and, and the last thing I'll say, um, before taking some questions maybe, i- is just that, um, you know, this bill also doesn't address the, the fundamental point that, um, Comptroller Scanlon made in his report, which is that, um, uh, the companies are dodging millions of dollars in state taxes every year. Um, and as he highlighted, by his most conservative estimate, I think admittedly conservative estimate, at least sixteen million dollars have been, uh, have gone unpaid in recent years to the state in UI contributions. And other states have, have also been pursuing this issue. In, um, in Massachusetts, the state, uh, the state AG got a hundred and twenty-four million dollars um, from Uber in unpaid, uh, in unpaid UI contributions. In New Jersey, uh, the state got a hundred million dollars from, from Uber alone. And in New York, um, three hundred and twenty-eight million dollars were recruited. So this is money that the state is leaving on the table by not pursuing this issue and, and I, um, I don't, I don't totally understand why. Um, so anyway, with, with that, I'll, I'll close and, and I hope the, the committee can vote yes on this bill.
Thank you. Any questions of the committee? Uh, Representative Hughes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for the panel. I know we've heard from this group for many years and I am deeply sorry that we have not made more progress as these companies have made more profit. And I think one of the pushbacks that we get is that if we, uh, create these floor, uh, standards and even possible transparency or, um, collect the taxes that are owed, is that it would increase prices for consumers. But in fact, I think it's just increasing profits for the company. Um, it, especially, and maybe you can speak to that in these, um, states and areas that have implemented those, those protections. How are the, uh, consumer prices proportionally high?
No, and we, we do have good data now from, from New York City where, um, rideshare drivers have had a pay standard for several years now and delivery, uh, app-based delivery workers also. Um, and, you know, consumer prices ha- have risen, but not, um, not at a pa- not at a pace that's different than anywhere else in the country, even though there is a pay standard. So basically, there is no evidence of any, uh, uh, of any meaningful relationship, any meaningful impact on consumer prices from this minimum pay standard in, in New York certainly.
And, and, uh, Ray brings up a really good point through you, Mr. Chair, that, um, this is the only job where his pay has, has decreased, in fact, below our minimum wage age that we have passed and, and demanded here in Connecticut. So I'm curious how that's legal. Anybody? Anyone? Bueller? Bueller?
Well, it doesn't have to be. Um, this would be the first answer. Um, there is a system in place that, um, well, I'll try to make this brief. Overall, the way that these companies like Uber and Lyft have proliferated was first, they destroyed the sector that came before them, which was the taxi industry. Um, they had a very aggressive policy of putting in practices that may violate the law with the understanding that through their incredible Silicon Valley financing, they would be able to overcome the violations by just paying them when they happened and, uh, ignoring, uh, and when they didn't happen, just celebrating that, uh, celebrating that victory. Um, there are places, jurisdictions in the world, uh, and in, where, uh, where they've been more or less successful, including in the United States. So for example, in Massachusetts, you could say, um, through the late, this is the, only the latest example, but it is so relevant because I think it provided the basis for Comptroller Scanlon's report. Um, the state simply decided, uh, uh, after years of litigation, um, uh, along with the companies, because it was a negotiated agreement, that there would be a minimum wage. So there is a minimum wage. Um, here in Connecticut, we're a little bit also limited by the fact that um, individual wage claims, uh, through the Department of Labor are taken on a one-by-one basis and they don't tend to take on a whole sector in any kind of comprehensive strategic enforcement campaign. So you're not likely to have an individual worker's minimum wage case go through the Department of Labor to the Supreme Court, for example. And on the worker's side, it's almost impossible to bring one of these cases because of arbitration agreements. So that's another way that, even if our current Connecticut law does classify these workers as employees for minimum wage and overtime, which is entirely possible that it does, um, the case isn't being, it can't be brought functionally. Um, or it takes a very long time to get to the Connecticut Supreme Court. So I think the answer is, um, that the, the workers can be paid a minimum wage. Many places they are being paid a minimum wage. And there's a lot of research, as Attorney Ocampo mentioned now, that shows that rather than forcing the companies out of the state, which is a, is a concern that's often articulated, um, in fact, they stay and often celebrate the, uh, the, uh, newfound presence of living wages for their workers in that state.
And thank you for, um, reminding this committee of the celebration of that. One of the things that I believe in, in Connecticut, uh, consumers is that we want to be ethical consumers. And I'm wondering if the transparency that's in this bill that shows driver, I mean, shows, uh, passengers essentially what their driver is actually being paid, if they would be horrified. Uh, it sounds like there's somebody who. But they, but they don't know it and you don't know it, correct?
Sometimes I would ask them, like, "How much this strip cost you?"
Yeah.
Just to show them. Because, you know, hey, I paid ten dollars for this trip and look, Lyft is paying me three dollars and fifteen cents. Like, what? That's the reality of.
Are there any other drivers that can attest to the horror of consumers?
You can actually, if you could, take a s- seat and, and use a microphone, uh, so we can get you on the record and please say your name. Thank you, Representative Hughes.
That's perfectly fine, though. I, I believe the ranking member, Representative Sanchez, knows I'm well good at being loud. He knows me well.
I do.
Um, but Alex Johnson from North Haven, um, I would say I've spoken to thousands because this is not just a driver issue, this is a state issue, this is a consumer issue. When I show them side by side, they are horrified. I've explained this multiple times, that what drivers want is best for Connecticut because it creates a triangle of the money going to the driver, directly back into businesses because they are paid properly, which directly goes back into the exact same people that uses our services and goes in the circle. As of right now, these companies are only paying five thousand dollars a year to operate in this state. How many of y'all have paid more than that annually to take care of your cars?
None.
Raise hands because they need to see it, like. All of us. We should not be paying more than what these companies are to operate in the state. It's ridiculous. And then not only that, it's not benefiting the state as well because they are not being equitably taxed. If this legislation were to pass, it would improve not only for drivers and the roads we ride, paid on, but it would be best for consumers because it would take care of the roads that these companies ultimately sent us out on and ultimately, unfortunately, destroy. We all deal with hot holes, we all deal with the flooding, we all deal with poor infrastructure. We would actually be able to make a profit in this state to take care of roads, to take care of public transportation. We're going through a budget right now and what is the biggest fight? It's into part of transportation. We're arguing about trains, we're arguing about the buses, we're arguing about this. It is only fair that these companies pay their fair share. I talk to consumers and they pay more than that in their just annual ta- car taxes for their families. Why are these companies that make millions of dollars in this state paying less than an average nutmegger that just pays into annual taxes? That's ridiculous. We need looks that benefits consumers, that benefits drivers, that benefits the state, and that's what this legislation would do. Um, just while I do have a mic, I would ask that, as much as we do appreciate, because we have been asking it for years, that it would require that the chat be available in English and Spanish. We have Arabic speakers here, we have French speakers, African language speakers. We pride ourselves on being a diverse state. English and Spanish is not enough. It would disservice so many drivers. And a lot of reasons that these drivers don't even understand these arbitration agreements or what they're signing is because they don't know what they're reading. They have no understanding of, on a legal level or even on a language level. And that's not right. And frankly, it's breaking ADA in every way possible. It's not right. Thank you.
So, but thank you so much. I, I have one more question for you. Would, do you think that the, um, that the companies should pay the cost of that, uh, uh, language chat, um, expansion?
I don't think they would even have to pay a cost because they are international companies that are operating twenty-four, seven around the globe. It would take them no time and no effort to transfer them to another, um, customer service line in another country that another driver is using, either in France, either in Morocco. They are global companies. It would not cost them anything and any complaint otherwise would be a lie. It is straight laziness and I will call it on it. It's lazy. It's lazy. These are international companies that are making millions of dollars. If they enjoy breaking ADA, then I call on the federal government to take up a case against them. Because language and communication is just as much of a right as any ramp, any accessibility for the blind, language, accessibility right and a human right to everyone. How can you have these drivers even understand? I've opened, and unfortunately Carlos Gomez is not here. I have had his app be in the directions, giving him fares in Spanish, swap it to look at taxes to help him, and it swaps immediately to English. That is deliberate, that is wrong, that is criminal. And they are doing it to drivers every day. That is not okay.
And finally, the AI AI algorithms that, uh, arbitrarily come up with, uh, what, what they're gonna, you know, charge or, or give to the driver, can you say a little bit more about that? And how has that impacted the industry and when did that happen? Yeah.
Um, so I, I, what I, I mean, the short answer is that I, I don't know very much because they don't tell anything. Um, and so it, it's sort of, you know, I think left to drivers and advocates to kind of piece together exactly what's happening. But, uh, my understanding is that a few years ago, um, both Uber and Lyft switched to this model of upfront pricing from, you know, previously they'd been paying drivers on a sort of a per-mile and per-minute basis, sort of the old taxi rate card system with, you know, some basic amount of clarity as to why workers are earning what they're, what they're earning. And then they switched this upfront pricing model where, um, you know, the, the, the pay, uh, that's offered to drivers is essentially the function of an algorithm that, you know, nobody knows exactly what's in it, what the inputs are that go into it. Um, and it's variable, which is to say, you know, like, day-to-day, it moves all over the place and it's also individualized. So it's based on data about specific drivers or at least, you know, drivers with certain characteristics. Query what characteristics, but, um, you know, uh, and then set on an individual basis. Um, so it means that, you know, some workers might do, uh, you know, a, a trip every day that's sort of essentially the same, get paid very differently. Um, and other workers might be getting offered different amounts to do the same work. And I, and it, you know, it does raise a host of sort of like basic fantasy issues and also discrimination issues. You know, what are the bases on which, uh, the companies are discriminating between these, between these drivers? Um, and, and it's on, and it's on the consumer side as well.
Do we have another, uh, answer to that?
Here's a separate point.
Okay. Sure.
Thank you. Could you please state your name for the rec? Thank you. Could you please state your name for the record?
Okay, my my name is Joseph Ajayi. I have been living here more than twenty-one years. I am a citizen. I have I've lived out here for four years. And I have drove more than twelve years. And really, I thank you for listening to us, but I think that what we are going through mean a lot. Why? Because I think that Lyft, Uber drivers and video drivers are saving life. And what we are doing, all what we are doing is based on life and the dignity of ourself and our kids. Because Uber drivers, video drivers, Lyft drivers, they help our kids or your kids to achieve their goal. Because this way, we see ourself proud because we want our kids be better than us. And look at what this Uber drivers live there early morning or late night, they take care of our kids. Let's think about our kids.
That's a, that's a really good point. I wonder what we as consumers can do to fight against this discrimination and unfair standards and thresholds.
Good question. This is what we are looking for. The fight is the transparency. The transparency will bring all people to sit on the table, around the table and know the path of each one, what each one is bringing in the table and how the 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 share should be. Because when I do the calculation, I think that the the company is taking sometimes fifty-seven percent of what the consumer, the the client pay, or even sometimes more than that, seventy percent. And it is very, very wicked. Very, very wicked. You know, I think that they have to think about really what drivers do because first of all, nobody is better than nobody. Everybody is playing his role in this society, you understand? And according to what is going on, if we accept to put our differences together, I think that we will make it work well.
So the transparency you're saying is the first step. It certainly doesn't bring, make it legal to be paying subminimum wage. But it would be at least letting the consumer know how much profit they are making and how little they're paying their driver who's providing all the service.
Yes or no, but really, yes. No, let's not think about the part of each one, the role everyone is playing in this society.
The roads.
Yes, if you think about this, we have to let drivers live better life so they can take really care of what they are doing. Because let's say, if you if you can bring your kid to the club and bring him back safely, you won't be, you won't be happy to sleep. Imagine you're on the bed and the cold, they say your your son is out of the road. You won't be able to sleep.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Weir, I believe. James and Daniel, prepare yourselves for some questions.
You don't have to prepare that hard. I'm just thinking out loud. Don't don't go too crazy. I so this is the third year we've heard the bill, this proposal, and it may have been around long before I got here, but this is my third year. And some of the, a lot of the past couple of years revolved around transparency. And so I think this will go to, well, this can go to either of you, but it seems like what you were asking for, I have not compared this year's bill to last year's bill, what you were asking for in the past was more transparency about receipts and maybe a little different than what you're asking for this year. And again, haven't compared the two, but Uber provided us the the entire committee last year with what they were providing their drivers, what the consumer saw and what the drivers saw. And that to me, at the time, seemed to satisfy some of, maybe not all of what you were looking for. But this this year's bill, where you're looking to have the driver see if I understand what the passenger is paying, what the rider is paying and also yeah, what beyond that are the drivers looking for? Through you, Mr. Chair.
So all this bill requires is for drivers to see what consumers pay, consumers to see what drivers are paid, and then a breakdown of 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 what the rates are for what drivers are earning. That's for drivers. So why they're why they're being paid what they're being paid, a breakdown on a on a per mile and per minute basis. That's that's all that's in this bill and and I don't, I don't think that's an expansion from previous legislation. In fact, I think it's actually has stripped something out, some things out from at least the bill that was moving two years ago. So a lot of the things that I that I've been talking about on in the bill, I'm I'm suggesting them as things that I think should be in the bill and and and, you know, others as well. So that's that's really the transparency that we're talking about and, you know, I I think it's, I think it's reasonable that, you know, passengers on the completion of a trip should see what what drivers are getting paid. And I know that Uber in its testimony, you know, said that that was unprecedented or that there's only one other jurisdiction in the world for which that's true. And that's that's not true. There's several different states in in the United States that have mandated those disclosures as part of the itemized receipts to be sent to to consumers, breaking down what drivers were paid and and you know what what consumers paid instead of comparing those numbers. But so no, that's that's the basic transparency requirement in this bill. Yeah.
I I might add, and Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe what's not included in this bill that in the draft language that Dan Ocampo has submitted in his, attached to his testimony would be a more transparency to the state itself. And 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 we think it's important for the for the driver, for the passenger and for the state to have access to this information.
I think this goes back to Dan. So you talked about the different jurisdictions based on what other jurisdictions are requiring this type of reporting. Can you tell me, and I will do my research, but you know, if you care to comment, what other industries have this type of, you know, what would be an analogy to a similar type of recording, reporting requirement for an independent contractor to have the type of reporting and visibility that you're talking about? Another industry, if you can reference one or two.
Well, I think the the really apt comparison on this is the taxi industry as it existed before the rise of Uber and Lyft, because what we're talking about is you know, is essentially the taxi industry and, you know, once upon a time there was a meter and there were per mile and permanent rates that were established, either as a matter of sort of company policy or as like city law in New York City certainly, and that information was public and drivers could see that and consumers could see that, and that was essentially the way that it worked, and I think it was an effective model. But you know, these these drivers are here asking for, you know, this transparency just as the most basic first step because they're not protected by the slate of workplace protections that apply to other workers in the state. And I think that's the sort of essential problem here is that we do have a minimum wage in, you know, in Connecticut and unemployment insurance and workers compensation and all these workplace protections. It's just that these workers have been cut out of it by the way that the companies structured this work. And, you know, no court in this state, to my knowledge, has ever seriously inquired whether that practice is legal. And certainly in other places, there have been determinations that it's not legal. But I think, so I think that's the, that's the real question to to be asking.
So I have a couple of follow ups to that and I'll draw a distinction. Again, I'm here to listen. I I'm not here to be argumentative, but I also need to be convinced if we're gonna be, you know, so I I would be talking to any any of you as if, you know, you're a friend of mine or or whatever. If if we're making, talking about making major policy change, I feel like I'm not doing my job if I'm not pushing and asking why we should be compelled to. So I wanted to let you know that's where this is coming from. But I would make a distinction, as I understand, the taxi industry, you know, at that time, you had the drivers who had the medallions, right? The drivers owned medallions, maybe the taxi company, but the vehicles were owned by the taxi company with the driver using a company provided vehicle. And I, you know, I I'm gonna speak, you know, I don't know that whether they were employees or or independent contractors, but in this case, these are independent contractors using their own vehicles, working on a platform. And so I, you know, I struggle to make that analogy. So that's, that's where I'm saying we're making major, talking about making a major policy shift. And I I'm looking for some evidence that this has been done elsewhere and I'm not seeing that. I guess the other thing I would point out is that, you know, again, being independent contractors, the same labor law doesn't apply. Unemployment insurance doesn't apply. You know, California recently struck down, you know, kept kept Uber and Lyft workers classified as independent contractors. So I see that there's a precedent there. So I understand what you're asking for, but it doesn't seem to conform with current labor law. And I'm not an attorney, you are, but I'm saying, me doing a little bit of research that this is, this is the distinction I see is that we're we're talking with independent contractors versus employees. Through you, Mr. Chair, is my argument, does that that makes sense to you? At least see my train of thought. Do you, Daniel?
Yes, so I mean, first, you know, I I appreciate your serious engagement on this issue. I do think it is really important and I appreciate that you're taking it seriously. And, you know, real thought is necessary before before making policy here, and I think that's what we've been doing over the last several years and what I hope we're doing today again. You know, to your point about, you know, is this being done elsewhere, just just to reiterate, there have been transparency protections like the ones in this legislation passed in a in a series of other states in Minnesota, in Massachusetts, in Colorado, in Washington State, in New York City too, there's a lot of transparency. And, you know, it hasn't upended the industry. It's, I think it's just a a basic, you know, workplace justice measure and a first step. You know, really, really what these drivers have been asking for for the last several years is a minimum pay standard. That I think is the is the gold standard and it's now what we have in, you know, a series of states. And I I think these these workers deserve to be covered by the minimum wage and I think that's what we should be moving towards.
I I'm gonna allow Representative Weir to call on the the folks that he'd like to question. So if you, if he has a question, I'd certainly, I'd certainly allow for it. Okay. Thank you. If you if you want to step forward and and come to the mic by all means.
But, Mr. Chair, I would like to follow up.
I I promise, Representative, we are to keep this brief. Just on the fact of the matter that we are seen as independent contractors because we use our own vehicles. Many of our vehicles are actually rented and provided by the companies. Actually, it's even been pushed more by the companies lately in terms of environmental reasons to push more electrical vehicles. So the fact that we are seen as independent contractors solely because we use our own owned vehicles is not completely correct. As well as the fact that, as I've said before, many drivers sign up and don't understand what they are signing up for because of language barriers and because these things are only provided in English. If you ask many drivers whether they would choose to be independent contractors or not, or if they had signed up originally, if they had understood it correctly, is a valid question to ask every driver. As well as the fact that even though we are third contractors, as someone who's grown up in a family of contractors, I have showed them our pay, I have shown them the model and they do not even value or see us as that way as well. And I really believe in, nor do I believe we should address it in this legislation to see us just solely as the original definition as third third party contractors is not completely correct. Innovation has changed things and truly I think we need a new category for drivers.
Thank you, Representative Weir.
Thank you for that explanation. So, Daniel, I just, I almost forgot where I was. Anyhow, but luckily I took a note. So I just want to point out that I did, just to make a clarification, this is not tit for tat, but I didn't really ask about the different jurisdictions. I understand that this is going on. My question was, what other industries are we asking this type, this level of reporting for other independent contractors? And I don't, I don't think, I'm gonna do my own research because I would like to know that for comparison, but that's the distinction I wanted to draw. And then I think I'll just I'll make the statement that, you know, I recognize that the vehicle is is one piece of the equation, but there's also a number of other pieces that go into the equation of how one is classified as an independent contractor or an employee. You know, we don't need to go into that now, but there's definitely more, there are several criteria that go into determining how one is viewed. And obviously, some some jurisdictions have taken the the view that 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 they could be considered employees or there's some sort of, again, I'm not privy to what these, some of these other states, how they're and I'm gonna do my homework, but I know that there's case law in California that says that they're not. And, you know, whether you're making your own schedule, under the supervision of someone else, are you autonomous? I know there's a number of different criteria, but you know, I I I don't think I'll make any more statements other than to say I hear all of you. I appreciate, I've not taken an Uber in Connecticut because I have my own car, but when I don't mean to take that lightly, but I can't say that I have from experience had an Uber driver in Connecticut, and if if I had, it's been a while. But I have taken Uber rides when on vacation, you know, when in different cities. And I've tried to take the time to ask the drivers, this was even prior to me being in the legislature. You know, why do you do this? Is this full time, part time? You know, just to try to get a feel. And so I'm sensitive to the subject, but I, you know, I want you all to to make every bit of money that you can. You know, I want you to be successful and earn a good living. What I struggle with here, and I'm not gonna make an absolute statement, but I struggle here that we are interfering when we take, when we say, okay, now we're gonna classify you as employees or we're gonna try through this legislation to assign benefits that are that are due to employees that through labor law, an employee has earned when you're still classified as an independent contractor. So I I really struggle with that. It's gonna take a lot of convincing for me not, and it's not that I'm putting up a a roadblock to cast dispersions against any of these fine people, right? I appreciate the the work that you get up. You're you're here testifying on your behalf. That's admirable. But the fact of the matter is that, you know, we'd be setting a real precedent here in a place that I'm not so sure we should be doing that. So I'll leave it there. I I thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions of the committee? Seeing that, thank you all for your testimony today.
Thank you.
See you soon. Up next, we have Brooke Foley.
Proceed, sorry. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Senator Kushner, Representative Sanchez and other distinguished members of the committee. My name is Brooke Foley and I represent the Insurance Association of Connecticut and I'm here to express opposition to House Bill seven one nine six, which would impose strict limitations on non-compete and exclusivity agreements. These agreements are essential for businesses to protect investments, safeguard proprietary information and maintain a competitive workforce. Non-compete agreements prevent the disclosure of trade secrets and client relationships to direct competitors, while exclusivity agreements help establish clear expectations, reducing conflicts of interest and ensuring workplace stability.
Brooke, I apologize. I want to be able to hear your testimony and I know the door is open, so I, and I don't want to be rude to you or not hear you out fully. So I just want to wait for the door to close.
That door was locked earlier, so I don't, I think it's open now.
Glad I stopped before the clapping happened. So it's good, good.
Industries like insurance, finance and Um, industries like insurance, finance and technology rely on these agreements to foster trust, innovation and client retention. Connecticut law already ensures fairness by giving courts authority to review these agreements for reasonableness and duration, geographic scope and necessity, and invalidate and modify agreements deemed overly restrictive or unreasonable. This bill would remove this flexibility, replacing it with a rigid salary threshold that, that does not account for industry differences. The salary threshold in this bill is over a hundred thousand dollars. Even employees that make much lower than that have sensitive and may have sensitive information that can jeopardize businesses if it is not protected. Restricting these agreements could have economic consequences. Businesses invest significantly in employee training and development. Without enforceable protections, companies may be less willing to invest in their workforce, knowing competitors could easily poach employees. Additionally, as neighboring states allow reasonable non-compete and exclusivity agreements, this bill can make Connecticut less competitive for businesses and talent. Weakening these protections also may lead to increased litigation costs for employers trying to safeguard intellectual property and client relationships, ultimately raising operational expenses. We urge the committee to maintain the balanced approach set out by the case law, which protects both employees and businesses. Thank you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Uh, I don't see any hands. So Brooke, thank you so much for your testimony today.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Travis Wadi. Let's go back to him. Uh, Nick Teeling.
Senator Kushner, Representative Sanchez, Senator Sampson, Representative Weir and distinguished members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. My name is Nick Teeling and I'm testifying today on behalf of Connecticut Voices for Children, a research and advocacy organization working to ensure that one day Connecticut is a thriving and equitable state where all children can reach their full potential. CT Voices is testifying in support of House Bill seven one nine six, an act concerning limitations on the use of non-compete agreements because non-compete agreements negatively affect workers in the labor market by prohibiting workers from taking a job or starting a competing business for a set period of time after leaving their employer. Limiting NCAs would help address three labor market challenges we are seeing in Connecticut's economy, economy since the pandemic, uh, induced recession, uh, which we detailed in our written testimony. Slow job growth, slow wage growth and higher wage inequity and substantial gender, racial and ethnic wage gaps. House Bill seven one nine six proposes to prohibit non-compete agreements for employees earning less than three times the state minimum wage and independent contractors earning less than five times minimum wage. For workers above these thresholds, the bill ensures that NCAs are only enforceable if they're, if they're time limited to a maximum of one year or two years if the worker receives continued compensation, narrowly tailored in scope and justified by legitimate business interest. NCAs are widely used across industries and wage levels affecting an estimated eighteen percent of US workers at any given time and up to thirty-eight percent of over their careers. Contrary to their intended purposes, many low-wage workers who sign NCAs have no access to trade secrets yet are still restricted from seeking better job opportunities. Their widespread use also surprises job growth by discouraging new business formation and reducing job mobility, making it harder for workers to fill up positions. House Bill seven one nine six would help increase the state's, uh, would help increase the state's job growth and produce a more dynamic labor market, making it easier for businesses to recruit workers and increase job growth across the state. NCAs reduce wage growth by limiting workers' ability to leverage outside job offers for higher pay. Research shows that stricter, stricter NCA enforceability is associated with lower average earnings with especially, with especially strong wage suppression effects for low-wage workers. A study of Oregon's two thousand eight ban on NCAs for hourly wage workers found that wages increased by two to three percent on average and may have increased up to fourteen to twenty-one percent for those previously bound by NCAs. House Bill seven one nine six would help increase the state's wage growth by strengthening job mobility, increasing competition amongst employers and ultimately generating faster wage growth. NCAs exacerbate wage inequalities and racial, gender and ethnic wage gaps. Low-wage workers have less bargaining power when signing NCAs, making it them less likely to receive compensation in exchange for these restrictions. Additionally, structural barriers to job mobility such as low, lower relocation rates among black workers and constraints on long-distance commuting for women magnify the negative effects of NCAs. Research shows that stricter NCA enforceability reduces earnings for female and non-white workers at twice the rate of white male workers, furthering widening existing wage gaps. House Bill seven one nine six would help reduce the state's wage inequalities by helping low and middle-wage workers and women, black and Hispanic workers across high, higher paid, higher paying jobs negotiate fair wages, ultimately reducing Connecticut's wage inequality and substantial wage caps. Thank you for your time and consideration and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I don't see any questions of the committee. Uh, greatly appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you for your time, Representative Sanchez.
Thank you. I see that we have Travis, uh, please forgive me if I mispronounce your name, Travis Wadi.
You got it. That's exactly it. Thank you so much and thank you to the committee, uh, for the opportunity to testify, uh, regarding HB seven one nine six as it relates to non-compete, compete agreements and more specifically as it relates to independent insurance agents. My name is Travis Wadi. I'm the EVP of Government Relations for Big Eye Connecticut, which is a statewide trade association representing independent insurance agents and brokers. We're also celebrating our hundred and twenty-fifth, uh, anniversary this year in Connecticut. Broad limitations on the use of non-compete agreements such as those proposed in seven one nine six would have detrimental consequences for independent insurance agents specifically. It is, uh, it is unique. It's a unique business as I'm sure the committee is aware, given the prevalence of, uh, the insurance industry in Connecticut. While many businesses sell and hold tangible assets, the value of an independent insurance agent is tied to its ownership of policy expirations. And in fact, independent agents are so distinct that they even have special banks they work with to, uh, to, for financing because those banks understand how to value the agency's book of business. And tools like non-compete agreements or non-solicitation agreements, uh, and other restrictive covenants help those independent agents, uh, agencies, uh, protect their value. So independent agents and agencies, they invest considerable amount of time and resources into building their, uh, their clients, their book of business, maintaining those relationships. And non-compete agreements are one of the tools that they can use to prevent departing agents from taking those clients away, from taking those policy expirations to a competitor. And that helps preserve the value of an agency. Now, when an agency is bought or sold, one of the key assets being transferred is that book of business, those policyholder relationships, those future policy expirations. Restrictive covenants like non-compete agreements can help protect that asset. Um, and prospective buyers obviously want to have that sort of agreement that what they're buying is going to stay with them. And so in closing, independent insurance agents, uh, they do use less restrict, restrictive covenants such as non-solicitation agreements. But given the importance of protecting the agency's book of business, it really is important that they have the flexibility to choose restrictive covenants based on their specific needs. And so while there may be some job sectors where a tailored approach to addressing non-compete agreements, uh, there may be value to that conversation. Um, I would argue that the insurance sector is not one of them and that broad prohibitions can undermine the integrity of those insurance agents and really a very important insurance distribution model that is used widely in Connecticut and across the country. So with that, we urge the committee, uh, uh, to reject HB, uh, seven one nine six or exclude the business of insurance or take more of a scalpel approach to, um, how the state can address challenges within, uh, or challenges with the use of non-compete agreements that we may find in other sectors. But happy to, uh, answer any questions you may have.
Senator Sampson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Travis, thank you for being here today. I, I honestly don't have any questions. I just, uh, wanted to thank you for your testimony today. We debated this topic, uh, every year that I can remember on this committee. And, um, it's always frustrating to me that there are so few people that, uh, show up to, uh, defend non-compete agreements and the freedom of, uh, individuals, uh, employees and employers to negotiate the terms of their employment on, on their own. Uh, I worked as an insurance agent. I'm still a licensed agent to this day. Uh, but I, I used to, you know, manage many small independent insurance agencies. I know exactly what you're talking about. As time went on, when you went from having more outside, uh, insurance producers who were really generating their own books of business to having inside staff, people that really just answered the phone and, uh, you know, processed leads that were generated by the advertising of the business owner. The ownership of those, those leads naturally had a transfer to the company and rather to the, the individual. And, uh, a small independent insurance agency could be put out of business easily if a couple of their producers decided that they wanted to leave and take the customers with them. And this is the only mechanism that they have to protect themselves after their, their large, uh, investment to begin with. So, uh, your testimony is invaluable, uh, as far as making this, uh, issue more clear to, to my colleagues. I'm, I'm sorry that there's not more people in the room at the moment to hear it, but, uh, I will be certain to, uh, pass on the written testimony. Um, and if there's anything else you want to add about, uh, you know, how this affects, um, the insurance industry, I think you covered it pretty well, but I know you were limited to three minutes. So I figured I'd give you an option if you want to say another word. But I, I wanted to thank you for, for being here today, uh, and speaking for the other side of the issue. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your, uh, for your comments, Senator, um, and, and, uh, appreciate the, uh, the experiences that you've had and, and sharing that with, uh, with your colleagues in the, the General Assembly. Um, it is, uh, we are, we are unique, um, and it is extremely important to protect the value of, uh, of the independent agency through these types of restricted covenants, which aren't always non-competes. There are, there are other mechanisms that many, uh, use, but we can't account for every single scenario where, um, where, you know, may, there may be instances where a non-solicitation doesn't go quite far enough. And I would also add that I think this industry is thoughtful around how they're using non-competes and perhaps using less restrictive, um, covenants like non-solicitations or non-disclosures where it makes sense. And so it is, uh, I don't, I don't think that it is a, it is the go-to, but I think it is an important tool that they have.
I don't see any other questions, uh, of the committee. So thank you for your testimony.
Great. Thank you.
Uh, up next, we have, uh, David Glidden.
Yep. Uh, good afternoon, co-chairs, ranking members, members of the committee. My name is Dave Glidden, uh, and I'm the Executive Director of CSEA, SEU Local Two Thousand One, which is a labor union representing over twenty-five thousand Connecticut workers and retirees. I offer the following testimony on behalf of CSEA, um, and as well as all of the union locals and C-BAC in support of Senate Bill fourteen eighty-six, an act concerning temporary state employees and collective bargaining. In the fabric of Connecticut's workforce during two thousand twenty-four, there were over twelve hundred temporary state workers or more accurately seasonal state workers, tirelessly working in diverse functional roles from lifeguard to interpretive guide and many others. The overwhelming majority of Connecticut seasonal state workers work in positions in which they are dedicated to ensuring the public's health and safety. The work done by seasonal workers, while necessary and valuable, is often truly seasonal in nature, hence the name. Problem we have seen is that some agencies misuse seasonal workers by assigning them duties that are not seasonal at all, but rather are the exact same duties that are performed by full-time, year-round state workers. Yet they are treated very differently than their full-time counterparts. Specifically because of the rules and nature of seasonal employment, many are subjected to a cycle of employment instability, being regularly laid off without pay for three months after six months of work. Secondly, the wages for seasonal workers are notably low, making it difficult for them to sustain themselves. And thirdly, seasonal workers are denied access to health insurance benefits and consequently struggle to secure such benefits for themselves and their families. Many seasonal workers have been misused in this way for many years, performing bargaining unit duties right next to full-time bargaining unit workers, but being paid less, being denied healthcare and getting temporarily laid off at regular intervals. The legislation before you would fix that. In situations where seasonal workers regularly assigned to do bargaining unit work, they're automatically placed in that bargaining unit upon the request of the exclusive representative. This will enable them to collectively bargain for fair wages, benefits, mitigating the financial instability they currently face. Senate Bill fourteen eighty-six is about recognizing the invaluable contribution of all workers regardless of the duration of their employment. The bill embodies the principles of fairness, equality and justice that we all honor. Does not require anyone to join a union, but does allow hardworking people who protect the health and safety of our communities to have a voice at the table. In closing, let me note that I have submitted longer written testimony that includes support for House Bill seventy-one ninety-five, an act concerning unemployment benefits for paraeducators. I urge the committee to support both bills and I thank you for your time.
Representative Hughes for a question.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your testimony. Um, do you see this as, uh, just one protection for paraeducators in terms of, uh, fortifying the pipeline, which we're so desperately in need of, uh, in our classrooms? And, and if it is only the first step, what would be the second step? Thank you.
I mean, I think it's a huge step. It would be a huge step forward in being able to recruit and retain paras. Right now, the pay and benefits for paras, despite the incredible importance of the work, is just not enough to bring enough folks into the field. And as a result, students suffer. So, um, uh, closing the loophole and allowing them to collect unemployment, uh, in the summer is certainly one step. But making more progress in terms of, uh, establishing a living wage for para-workers, uh, for para, paraeducators would be a wonderful additional step.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Chair, David, one of the things that, uh, the legislature is struggling with right now is, uh, is managing the special education costs in every district that are inflating, um, that are increasing and also inflating the, um, the town's budget and the state budget, quite frankly. Would the better, uh, retention of paraeducators, in your view, help with, um, reducing the outplacement and overrun costs of special education in your view? Thank you.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's certainly what I think that, uh, that districts are forced to make difficult decisions because they don't have the personnel on hand to do the job in the best possible way and in the most cost-effective way. So, you know, if we were able to make gains and, and, and make being a paraeducator truly a career, um, I think it would help tremendously with, with those types of costs. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from the committee? Uh, seeing none. Uh, oh, Senator Sampson, my apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I appreciate your testimony and honestly, this is not my question. I just got a text from Representative Weir, who's out grabbing some lunch, but still watching. He's a dedicated ranking member. He, he was just curious whether or not, uh, school districts actually pay into the unemployment, uh, compensation insurance fund. I'm just curious, uh, based on your comments about, uh, allowing, uh, unemployment during the summers, et cetera. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
I don't offhand know the answer to that question, Senator, but we will get it for you and, and for Representative Weir.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, and thank you, uh, David. I don't see any further questions from the committee. Really appreciate your testimony.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Michelle Mania. Zach Levy.
Good afternoon, Representative Sanchez, Vice Chair Wilson, Ranking Member Sampson and members of the Labor Committee. My name is Zach Levy and I'm a legislative and political director for Ask Me Council Four, which represents thirty thousand public and private sector workers. I'm testifying today in support of multiple bills that would help working families in Connecticut. Ask Me Council Four supports Senate Bill fourteen eighty-four and we appreciate the committee looking at artificial intelligence from the perspective of protecting workers. We see artificial intelligence being used for new innovations and developments routinely. However, there is also the real impact that it has on humans. An overreliance on AI puts the public at risk of discriminatory decisions or other harmful actions. There is also a risk for employees who can have their working conditions impacted negatively by the inclusion of AI over decision-making. We thank the committee for including language in SB fourteen eighty-four, which would notify an employee when employers are using electronic monitoring and protecting them from invasive practices as well as restricting the use of the data that is collected. Employees deserve to be informed and know their rights when data is being collected about them. We also appreciate the committee's language to inform and protect employees when high-risk AI is used. However, we ask that the committee include language making the use of artificial intelligence. However, we ask that the committee include language making the use of artificial intelligence in decision-making about an employee or their working conditions be a mandatory subject of collective bargaining. We believe we believe that as we see this new technology technology continue to emerge, that workers' voices should be included and that they should be protected from decisions that could impact their working conditions. We also ask that the bill include language for a private right of action for an employee so that they can find redress for any harm or negative consequences through the court system. Council 4 supports Senate Bill 1486, which would allow temporary state employees to be included in a bargaining unit upon the bargaining unit's request. Temporary employees are often performing similar or equal work to permanent employees, yet do so without the benefits and protections of a collective bargaining agreement. Temporary workers should not have secondary status to similar employees simply because they may be temporary or seasonal. These workers provide services to state residents and sometimes use to fill spots due to reduced staffing. So SB 1486 would also help retain workers that are already trained and have familiarity with the position and move them into permanent positions. Council 4 supports House Bill 7195, which would allow paraeducators to collect unemployment benefits in certain circumstances. Paraeducators are valuable parts of our school system and play an important role in educating students. Yet they are often among the lowest-paid workers in a school district while trying to juggle multiple students and/or classrooms. They aid students who are in need and ensure students are taken care of and successful from when they get to school until they leave. At the end of the school year, it is not always clear if a paraeducator will be retained for the following year. This often puts them in a tough situation where they're in a waiting period until they receive an assignment. We believe that they should be eligible to collect unemployment benefits during that time and not have to worry about their finances or being limbo, waiting to hear if they will be assigned again in the upcoming school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Zach. Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Zach, for coming in and speaking. Just several questions. The first question, so I know you, as well as several others, have kind of touched on the piece of paraeducators, of course, are not in the same boat like like most teachers where teachers by a certain time in the spring know whether or not they're going to have a position or not have a position or what their assignment is going to be for the next school year. And so could you talk to the piece of like what it's like, the waiting period is like for a paraeducator, not knowing necessarily what their assignment is, but more so the the unknowns around budget processing for school districts and and the uncertainty of that?
Yeah, I think that a lot of it goes into it when they retain all the teachers and they look at the staffing for paras and the money they have available. There might be just an instinct that they don't have enough money for the current level of staffing, but they don't know that until a couple of months has passed by. If there is that money there, they'll be able to give them a notice. Some of our paras find out, you know, August that they're going to have a job, but they've spent, you know, June, July, wondering what's going to happen. Are there going to be jobs? They've been told to kind of sit and wait in this limbo. So I think that this bill would allow that process to kind of happen a little easier. It would it would put a little bit more on the district to say, these this is our staffing level for the following year, which will bring clarity both to the Board of Education budget as well as the city side, and really help kind of overall look at the staffing levels that we have for paras.
And and just kind of, you know, continuing to touch on that where we talk on, you know, we look at some of some of these paraeducators in some districts are doing the extended school year programming, other summer opportunities with some of their students, or or they've applied for for that opportunity. And of course, the process sometimes is last-minute again, as as you're saying. And so could you talk about how this this also would help with that certainty of the limbo of, I don't know if I have a job. You know, I'm doing this for an additional two to three weeks, but I don't know if I've got a job come come August, how this would also help with that.
Yeah, I think that this bill would allow them to be eligible to collect while that uncertainty is going on. I mean, that is a very stressful time of the year for any employee, when all of a sudden their work ends and they're looking around, wondering if they're going to be able to pay the bills in two months, if they're going to be able to provide for their families. This bill would allow them to have that little extra bit of security to say, okay, while you wait, you can collect unemployment. Until you've heard, until there is a reasonable assurance, you are eligible to collect. And once they get that reasonable assurance, they know what their future holds, they know what their job will be, they're able to plan out their finances. That's why I think that this bill is really important to kind of providing that extra bit of stability for paras.
Another question, when we talk with this group, not knowing that certainty, does this affect their payment of like health benefits, for example?
Oh, I think for certain. I mean, you know, over the last few years, we've had great success with the healthcare subsidy program for paras. But I think, you know, if they're looking at, do I do a doctor's appointment over the summer when I might have free time because I'm not working, but then I don't have the money to pay for it? So all of a sudden, they're delaying health health outcomes that they need to address, they're delaying doctor's appointments, or they're taking them earlier. So there's no real timeline. It's kind of this limbo, I think one of the speakers said before, this limbo where paras are in, where they don't necessarily have control over what they can do on a day-to-day basis because they don't know what their future looks like.
I think, you know, for me, those questions are important because I think they highlight the quality of life issue that we're talking here. This is bigger than on the unemployment piece. It's a job security piece, but also the certainty moving forward. You know, just like a teacher or other professions that may not know, okay, at the end of this school year, I'm done. My assignment is done here. I'm not going to continue here any longer. It gives them that that predictability to be able to go to another school district or another profession, you know, or any of those opportunities, but it gives them the legroom to do such such a thing. But I think the other big piece here that you really highlight is the quality of life piece. When we continuously talk about healthy staff, healthy employees, and providing the resources for them to be and have healthy outcomes, yet those outcomes having to be in limbo because of the uncertainty to be able to pay for them really is a huge highlight, you know? Summer months are supposed to be, that that off time is supposed to be time that you have, or you're having fun with with family and friends, but more importantly, preparing for that next school year. And for anybody that would have a family, that's a scary position to be in, whether or not you're going to be able to afford the healthcare, the physical, I think an individual talked about for for your kid, or even get the clothes necessary for the next school year. So I appreciate your testimony and for you answering those questions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from the committee? Seeing none. Thank you, and greatly appreciate your testimony. Up next, we have Paul Amor.
Good afternoon, members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. My name is Paul Amorone. I'm a public policy associate and advocacy manager at the Connecticut Business and Industry Association. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. I did submit written testimony on five separate bills on the agenda, but in the interest of time, I wanted to highlight three. I'll begin with House Bill 7196, an act concerning limitations on the use of non-compete agreements. Non-compete agreements provide businesses with critical protections when it comes to trade secrets, client information, and other confidential information a business holds internally. There are instances where non-compete agreements are inappropriate, but House Bill 7196 misses the mark by extending the ban of non-competes to employees and contractors who make well over the $100,000 a year salary mark. Employees in this range can very well have access to confidential and proprietary internal business information. It's also problematic to use a multiple of the minimum wage as a threshold, considering the state's minimum wage is adjusted on an annual basis. In this case, employers would need to modify their usage of non-competes on an annual basis just to remain in compliance with the threshold. Non-compete agreements have been a staple in an employer's ability to protect their internal proprietary information for several years. And for that reason, CBIA urges the committee to take no action on House Bill 7196. Moving on to Senate Bill 1484, an act implementing artificial intelligence protection for employees, CBIA does appreciate the committee's efforts related to the importance of ensuring ethical and responsible use of AI. However, the requirements for conducting impact assessments through third-party contractors, maintaining risk management programs, and documenting all AI decision-making processes will impose substantial costs on small businesses. Many small businesses simply don't have the resources, staff, or time to dedicate to comply, and may choose not to use AI to create efficiencies, leaving them at a competitive disadvantage to their competitors who might be bigger and able to withstand those costs. CBIA would be happy to work with the committee on finding common ground related to the use of AI and how we can ensure employers are not handcuffed in their quest to provide more innovative products and services through the use of AI. And last but not least, Senate Bill 830, an act establishing safety standards to prevent heat-related illnesses in the workplace. CBIA has several concerns with this bill. First, the bill as written does not make it clear which sectors would be impacted. Specifically, lines 11 to 19 state, quote, "An employer who employs individuals in positions where a majority of the work is done in an outdoor setting, including, but not limited to, positions in agriculture, construction, or landscaping." The line "including, but not limited to" could lead to confusion among sectors that are not fully aware of what, if any, parts of the bill apply to them. We also see many aspects of this bill as repetitive. Employers already offer their employees an ample supply of water and break time when temperatures reach high levels. And it's also very important to note that employees are already protected by OSHA standards that apply specifically to heat exposure illness in the workplace or on the job site. Additionally, lines 173 to 177 can open the door to interference with an employer's ability to schedule and complete jobs in a timely and cost-effective manner.
Mr. Amorone, your time is almost up. Please conclude your remarks.
I will summarize. By requiring employers to rotate employees, schedule work later or earlier in the day, implement mandatory rest schedules, reducing work intensity or hours, and hiring additional employees as, quote, "relief workers." The broad scope of these requirements can lead to significant disruption in job completion timelines and additional costs associated with compliance of this bill. Several aspects of this bill are repetitive, unrealistic, and at times unenforceable. CBIA recommends utilizing existing state and federal safety laws and enforcement to ensure the safety of all workers impacted by this bill. We urge the committee to take no action on Senate Bill 830. And just for the record, I would also like to voice CBIA's opposition to two other bills, which I did submit written testimony on. Those bills are Senate Bill 1487, an act concerning transportation network companies and third-party delivery companies, which I also testified on in transportation yesterday, and House Bill 7197, an act requiring paycheck transparency. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Representative Wilson.
Thank you. First, thank you for coming to testify. First question I have, when we talk about some of this AI software, when we look at software period, data storage and kind of the data storage, we are, it's already occurring, right or wrong?
Of course.
So so asking for, you know, timelines for that data to be stored or analyzed, could you explain how it would be cumbersome for a small business that's already possibly paying for the usage of that software if it's something that's already occurring right now?
Yeah, I think one of the major concerns is every time a company or a small business wants to utilize AI, they need to have an impact assessment made by done by a third-party contractor, which isn't currently required. So whether that's hiring a new employee or promoting an existing employee or really instituting any sort of new technology, they need to go through a third-party vendor. That could cost tens of thousands of dollars or more, depending on the size of the business. So I think that's a major concern that we have in the bill. And I think everyone here can agree is AI is transforming workplaces very quickly. I think we do need to have some ability to rein in the the bad side effects of AI. But doing it in a way that we're uncertain of what the impact is going to be on small businesses or we're not as cognizant of the impact that it's going to have on small businesses, I think is very dangerous. And I don't think Connecticut is in a position to add more costs on employers. I mean, when CBIA, when we look at these bills, we say, does this make the cost of doing business in Connecticut more affordable? And this bill, based on what's in it, does not.
Thank you. The the next question that I have, I want to go to the part about heat, you know, the heat illnesses, as you were discussing, some some of the concerns with the bill. You know, I look at last summer, extremely hot, hot summer. One of the abnormalities, more hot days than we've probably seen in a long time. And, you know, I I do, of course, work in the summer outdoors. Are there already, how does this affect businesses that are or work when we watched a lot of businesses kind of curtail or change their methods to protecting workers? So how does this slow down production of work in the long run?
Yeah, thank you for the the follow-up question. So I think on the the heat-related bill, there's also not an enforcement category within the bill. So I think we're asking employers to do things that there's no check or balance on whether those things are being done when we actually already do have a federal OSHA that is able specifically heat-related illness, address issues on work sites indoors and outdoors on heat-related illness. Some of the different requirements that are involved in Senate Bill 830 are, I think, very repetitive or troublesome, including implementing mandatory rest schedules, reducing work intensity or hours, and rotating employees, and even hiring additional employees as relief workers. This is in some ways changing an employer's timelines on jobs. It can increase costs on building materials and supplies, on timelines, on workers being on the job site earning their wages. And we think that most employers are already doing this. And then I think on on top of that, the big concern we have is who exactly is this bill impacting, right? It talks about outdoor, it talks about indoor, it talks about agriculture, construction, landscaping. But I think there are several other businesses and members of ours that are concerned that the broad scope of the language in the bill doesn't necessarily define if they'll be included in this or not.
Thank you for that. And just to follow up, and you may not be able to answer this, but some of those other businesses that you're talking about that are of your members, what are some of those other categories, just for our edification, but also thinking as we're working through this bill, are more so worried about possibly being captured?
Yeah, of course. So I won't name any any specific companies, but I will name different sectors. There are delivery drivers, whether that is a truck maybe that is going from house to house. And I some of those trucks, they have the fans on the side and not air conditioners. And then also restaurants, right, working in a in a kitchen. Temperature can get pretty hot in that kitchen, whether it's the middle of the winter or the middle of the summer. So right now, I don't know if those companies are necessarily included in the bill based on the broad language, and they don't want to be caught off guard when they potentially are included in it if it were to pass.
And then the last question that I have going to the paycheck transparency, what is the large concern that CBIA has?
Yeah, so the ability of an employer to dissect the codes that we're talking about that determine salary and benefits and compare them to other businesses within that sector, other businesses in the state, in the region, across the country. A lot of those businesses don't have that software, right? HR departments, anyone doing payroll, it requires a specific software. We just saw a few years ago when there was a pay transparency bill that was passed, I believe in 2021, that a lot of our members had to purchase a new software. It's not easy. It's not cheap to purchase that, especially with the high cost of living right now and doing business in Connecticut. So they might not have access to that right now. So and we're talking about small companies here, right? Five, 10 employees that then might have to go out and purchase that software, and then also maybe hire an additional employee or designate an existing employee to be the point of contact for employees who are requesting the information on the codes.
So so my, so the follow-up to that would be if this was a process where based off the software a company uses to produce paychecks or any of those things, if they had, almost like some businesses, well, a lot of businesses have posters or a webpage that just gave the acronyms that were within a pay stuff, would that be easier for businesses? Because I think, you know, one of the things that it can be tricky here is we're not trying, of course, to add an additional layer on, but understanding what the different codes are. Would it be easier if there was a poster or some sort of webpage that a business or someone would have based off of the codes they use?
Yeah, I I think we would certainly be open to having that conversation and happy to work with the committee on bringing members in small businesses who utilize an existing software to produce that information. Utilize an existing software to produce that information and, and see if they could utilize that same software to actually have the codes. Listed on something, maybe a hard copy or on their, you know, internal employee portal, certainly open to that conversation.
Thank you so much.
See any other hands, Paul? Thank you, uh, for your testimony.
Thank you so much.
Up next, we have Jennifer, uh, McLarnie.
Good afternoon, Senators Kushner, Representative Sanchez, Senator Sampson, Representative Weir, and members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. My name is Jennifer McLarnie and I'm a parent educator who lives and work in Tallinn. I am also a proud member of CSCA CEIU Local Two Thousand One. A labor union representing more than twenty-five thousand state municipal board of active and retired. Public and private sector workers, including thousands of pairs throughout Connecticut. I'm here to offer testimony today in support of House Bill seventy-one ninety-five. I'm a parent educator. I love being a parent educator. The work is demanding, but it is rewarding. Pairs are essential to the success of every school in Connecticut. I've been a parent educator for thirteen years. My current role is keyboarding. That means I help every kindergartner, first grade and second grader in my school learn to type. I learned to type in high school. That's four hundred and seventy-five students a week. In addition to keyboarding, my other responsibilities include reinforcing, reinforcing our student, our district's social emotional. Learning program, helping students to understand and regulate their emotions. I also have bus duty, lunch duty, recess duty, and dismissal duty. Parent educators are underpaid. Our compensation does not reflect the value of the work we do for Connecticut schools. The starting pay in my district is twenty-two cents above minimum wage. After thirteen years, I only make nineteen dollars and one cent an hour. That is before any deductions are taken out of my paycheck. The deduction for my high deductible health plan is seventeen percent of my health, of my paycheck. Seventeen percent of nineteen dollars is roughly three dollars and twenty cents. So in reality, my hourly pay just with my health plan is below minimum wage. Additionally, I need to personally fund fifty percent of my HSA, which is two thousand dollars for a family plan. Parent educators are ten-month employees. We do not get paid for any school breaks during the school year. And more importantly, we are not paid over summer break. Summer break is usually about two and a half months from mid-June to the very end of August. And personally, and for all parent educators, it is extremely difficult to have a two-and-a-half-month gap. Without any income coming in, especially when our wages are already so low. So due to what is essentially a technicality, we are legally barred. From applying for and collecting unemployment over the summer break when we are not in school and not being paid. The intent of HB seventy-one ninety-five is appreciated and supported by parent educators. However, we need livable wages, more affordable healthcare, and access to secure retirement benefits. I urge the committee to support HB seventy-one ninety-five. While also working to improve pay and benefits for all of Connecticut parent educators. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you for your time. Thank you for the time.
I don't see any hands, but thank you so much for, uh, your patience and greatly appreciate your testimony.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
You too. Up next, we have Nathaniel Paget.
Thank you to the co-chairs and the members of the committee. My name is Nathana Paget. I'm a resident of Lebanon, Connecticut, and I work for the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. As a beach director with the State Park Lifeguarding Program. Uh, I am offering the following testimony in support of Senate Bill fourteen eighty-six. An act concerning temporary state employees and collective bargaining. So, uh, to be respectful of your time somewhat, I'm going to abbreviate the testimony slightly. But essentially, I'm here because. The State Park lifeguards and many other seasonal's at deep. Have really no mechanism by which to advocate for themselves within the agency outside of their chain of command. So when I started my career as a State Park lifeguard eight years ago now. Uh, and I've worked my way up to become a beach director since then. We have been just answering to our supervisors the entire time. And the story that I brought is that in twenty twenty during COVID nineteen. The state had informed the lifeguards, it had brought all the lifeguards on and informed them that it was unsafe. For them to return to work at full capacity. Until the social distancing guidelines were reversed or loosened, which was supposed to be a relatively short affair at the time. Uh, you know, it was two weeks to slow the spread, but as that expanded. The state rapidly reversed its course as the summer got closer. And had instructed all the guards to be fully ready to open at full capacity and guard all the parks. At the time, I personally wrote a letter to the department, which was cosigned by thirty-five other lifeguards, which was about fifty percent of the guards in the program. Stating that we refused to return to work until the department worked with us to ensure a safe working environment, which to their credit, they did. The group of us did retain private legal counsel at the time while we were writing and submitting the letter. And this effort, again, it was a success story for us. Uh, but it was something that was only possible for the lifeguards because of the more centralized nature of our. Employment with deep, you know, all of us have to go through the same training if. Uh, something like a seasonal resource assistant, a, a maintainer. Or some other group like that had similar concerns. It is my view that it would be almost impossible for them to take some kind of similar action, simply because they're not all in the same place. They all work for different park managers. Et cetera. To speak to a public safety standpoint or an operational readiness standpoint. It would be much easier for us as a lifeguarding program to attract and retain. Uh, lifeguards, especially experienced seasonal lifeguards, if they had access to a union to advocate for them. We lose valuable employees on a yearly basis. We lose a large number of valuable employees on a yearly basis because they can't afford to continue coming back to work. And we spend an, a very large amount of money as a program retraining people to. To retain the number of guards that we need to adequately protect the public at our state parks.
Mr. Paget, your time is almost up. Please include your remarks.
Sure. So just to finish, uh, on that point, returning guards require less than half the amount of training hours that they're paid for. As new guards do. So, really Senate Bill fourteen eighty-six is just about recognizing the contributions of. All of the workers, regardless of whether they're seasonal or permanent employees. And as was mentioned before, it doesn't require anyone to join a union, but it does allow hard-working people. Who are health and safety focused to have a voice at the table. And I urge the committee to support this bill so that in the future, myself and the other professional lifeguards can focus on. Doing our job, which is public safety and maybe union representatives can focus on advocating for us. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about my testimony or the lifeguarding program at this time.
Uh, Representatives.
Uh, thank you again for, uh, coming and testifying. One question that I have is knowing you're a seasonal or, or temporary, uh, employee. How, how long past the season sometimes might they keep you?
Okay, good question. And I appreciate that. So many of the lifeguards are mostly work from a couple of weeks before Memorial Day. If you're a new guard, you need, you need over eighty hours of training to get certified. Because we are a United States Life Saving Association member program, it takes an exceptionally long time to get the guards up to speed on all of that. So you will start, you know, a few weeks before Memorial Day and then you'll guard Memorial Day to Labor Day. And then there might be some time after Labor Day, you know, where we're essentially packing up the facilities and, and, and preparing to winterize everything. Beach directors or in other instructors, not all of the lifeguard instructors are beach directors in the program. We have to come on significantly earlier because the State Park lifeguard program has one full-time staff member. My boss is the only full-time staff member at the entire rest of the program, which is over a hundred and ten strong most years. He's all seasonal and the training has to be updated on a yearly basis. Standards change. What, you know, as we work with other state agencies and, and national, uh, associations to make sure we're in compliance with everything that we need to be. In compliance with the curriculum really needs to be reexamined for returning guards. And so. Many of the people like myself in the program might work nine or ten months out of the year and it's. Like, you know, squeezing, trying to do. Be very efficient with our hours so as we're not overrunning the maximum amount of hours. It's a very long time. So it can be, it can be up to nine or ten months and then you have the, the mandatory three-month break as a seasonal employee.
Representative Weir.
Thank you for your testimony. I was trying to figure out how to, how to make sure I'm. Organizing this question, uh, before I ask it, but you stated that, um, a lot of the employees don't, and I'm paraphrasing, you, uh. Don't come back and you're retraining year after year because they can't afford to stay. What other reasons do employees leave? Um, I, uh, you know, it's been a little while since I've been to a, a state beach. Um, what other reasons are there for the employees leaving?
Sure.
Generally speaking, I don't, you don't have to.
Yeah, generally, no, it's a good question. Generally speaking, and this is, this is not, to be clear, a problem that is unique to Connecticut. Park lifeguards by any means, uh, we talk to many of our USLA colleagues across the country and. Lifeguards are at a national shortage generally. But there are, it's hard for us sometimes to be competitive with town beaches. That might be one reason people leave. Uh, towns can often, some towns, not all of them, but particularly on the more. Western end of the state, as you might imagine, some towns have, uh, significant. Financial latitude to offer a more competitive pay rate and as we are the only. United States Life Saving Association member program in the state, they also tend to have lower. Sort of, uh, requirements to be, you know, lower physical training requirements and lower hours of medical training as well. So we can lose people to that. Uh, additionally, some. The, the parks all, for the most part, are either organized into units with a park manager or some, some parks. Are, have their own manager to one park. And all of those parks are separate chains of command. So while I helped to train all the lifeguards in, that work for the State Park beaches. I'm actually not technically part of their chain of command, uh, you know. They report directly to their park manager and every park manager. Has their own set of priorities for their units, you know, not to, I don't mean to malign any of these people by any means, but. Some guards have significantly better conditions than other guards and some guards do even within the program. Jump ship from one park to another where they view the grass might be greener, you know, to speak plainly. Uh, and they don't, again, they don't really have any way to advocate for themselves. I. Myself and other people in the beach director position. And indeed, the program director, our boss, we do our best to advocate for our staff. Uh, you know, my number one concern is public safety. My number two concern is managing and advocating for my employees. They go hand in hand. It's important that the team as a whole is ready. To respond. So when. A lot of the time, they can feel like they're not heard. If they're sending concerns to the chain of command and it's entirely possible that. Things are coming from up the chain, you know, park managers might ask for something that they know the guards need and be told that there's no. Funding for it, but that kind of process isn't very, to them, I'm sure it can feel as though they're simply being ignored. Even when that might not necessarily be the case, it's not a very transparent process. And that has certainly caused frustration in the past and that has certainly caused people to depart the program in the past, absolutely.
And can I ask what you do that outside of those other few months of the year?
I study emergency management at the American Military University. Which is directly related, you know, I started in this job when I was sixteen. And that's really what sparked my whole, uh, interest in this sort of line of work is, is this career. So I study. And, uh, a lot of the time I am. Talking and talking to and working with, uh, other USLA programs as well, just, you know, a lot of us. Particularly us on the East Coast, you know, the upper part of the East Coast here. When we go off-season, a lot of us kind of get together and sort of break it down and see if we can. Copy each other's homework from, you know, for lack of better words and try and make a group improvements, but. It's, it's mostly school, which is the case for a number of the guards, probably the vast majority of the guards. Of course.
Thank you, Representative. I don't see any questions that you, uh, and greatly appreciate your testimony today.
Thank you so much.
Up next, we have, uh.
Hi. Good afternoon, Senator Kushner, Representative Sanchez, Senator Sampson, Representative Weir, and members of the Labor and Public Employees Committee. My name is Kayla Duskis and I'm a resident of Putnam, Connecticut. And I have worked as a parent educator in Killingly Public Schools District for nine years. I am also a proud member of the local three, six, eight, nine. And I offer the following testimony in support of the House Bill of nine, seven, one, nine, five. Parent educators are a critical part of Connecticut's public education system, yet we continue to be underpaid and undervalued. And due to what is essentially a technicality, we are legally barred from applying for and collecting unemployment over the summer months. When we are not in school and not receiving a paycheck. Too many parent educators are already forced to work multiple jobs during the school year to make ends meet. HP nine-one-nine-five is a small step towards recognizing our value and treating parent educators with the respect we deserve. Parent educators are productive workers in the school community and give a lot of themselves to their students and their families. Parent educators work side by side with teachers and providing education to all of our students. But we also need to take care of ourselves and our own family. We need to be valued. A description of my work, workday consists of working with multiple students a day. Each student has multiple goals that need to be met at different levels. Due to the lack of staffing, we cannot provide the one-to-one services that each individual student needs for them to be able to be most successful. Each day, we are not only assisting our students in completing their schoolwork, we ourselves are having to learn. To teach and to complete the assignments given at the same time as our students. We as parent educators are stretched thin throughout the school day due to being understaffed. Currently, teachers in our district get one to two planning periods per school day. And this gives the teachers the time to learn material and expanding ways to help their students. We as parent educators do not get that time. We as parent educators are the backbone of our school community, community. Schools need us in order to be successful in providing education to our students. Parent educators are understaffed and underpaid in the state of Connecticut. This bill will help the state of Connecticut in keeping parent educators staffed in school districts. Our school districts are losing valuable parent educators at an alarming rate. Parent educators are having to leave the job field of education in need of a twelve-month salary job. Receiving unemployment benefits throughout the summer months will keep parent educators in our school districts. Which needs us to remain in order for educacies, education system to be a whole and for the utmost success rates of our students. I have worked as a parent educator in the Killingly Schools for nine years and I only make seventeen seventy an hour, just over, over minimum wage. Many surrounding employees are receiving a cost of living wage due to inflation in our country. How are we supposed to be able to provide for our families and ourselves and necessary needs? And necessary needs have increased, but yet our pay remains this low. The current living wage for a single person to make ends meet in this, today's economy is twenty-five dollars and twenty-eight cents. We are not nearly close to this wage. This is why we need the opportunity to be able to collect unemployment benefits during the time in which we are not receiving work hours. This bill will significantly make a difference to help me provide for my family. Personally, I have one child to support and that is not including my husband and I. Personally, I have one child to support and that is not including my husband and I. We are a family of three. It is impossible for us to make ends meet on this salary. And I do not make enough earnings in a year to contribute to making ends meet. Due to the lack of pay, it is put a burden on my family and we cannot afford to grow our family. We have made it our new normal to learn how to go without. This is not fair to my husband and I as we try our best, but we still cannot provide. We both work full-time and I do not give all we would like to our child, which includes being able to afford to grow our family, to give our child a sibling, which is truly devastating to us.
Please conclude your remarks shortly.
Yep, if this bill does not pass, my family and I will severely be in more hardship. This also hardship includes the healthcare costs on my family. Where many times throughout the year, we are unable to attend doctor's appointments due to the fact of being not to be able to afford co-payments or further medical testing. This bill will significantly help me be able to put my more more money towards my family and mine's health and livelihood. I am proud to be a para educator, but I thoroughly enjoy working with children. I enjoy helping them grow, not only academically, but to be a more well-rounded person. I love seeing them grow and their accomplishments to be proud of my work, but mostly of them. While the intent behind HB seven, one, seven, one, nine, five is appreciated and supportive by para educators. We really need higher wages and more affordable healthcare and access to secure retire benefits. I urge the committee to support House Bill seven, one, nine, five while working to approve pay and benefits for para educators in Connecticut. I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Kayla. Uh, Senator Kushner.
Thank you, Kayla. I just simply wanted to make sure that I had an opportunity to thank you for being a para educator because. We know that our school systems would not work without our paras and. Um, you're critical to the entire structure of our public education system, uh, and I recognize that. We don't always um compensate you with, you know, as you should be, so um, thank you for coming forward and thank you.
I don't see any other questions uh or any, their hand up, so greatly appreciate your time and thank you again for your testimony.
Thank you.
Take care. Up next, we have uh Nick Frangemore.
Pretty close, yeah.
Uh, you could, the floor is yours, sir.
Sure. Uh, yes, my name is Nick Frangemore and I'm a resident of Enfield and I work as a field rep for Teamsters Local six, seventy-one. Um, since two thousand and seven, our union has represented para educators at the Southfield Board of Education. Uh, numbering uh over forty as of this year. Um, we at the Teamsters appreciate the leadership of our union siblings in the statewide para educators union coalition in the past many years. Uh, para educators play an essential role in educating our kids. They often have the closest working relationships with students. And assist those who need the most support. They're the backbone of the school system and an advocate for the most vulnerable students every day. However, they're rarely prioritized. Our Teamsters are proud to be para educators because they see firsthand the growth of our most vulnerable students and not only academically. But just to be more well-rounded people overall. They do this with ever shrinking budgets, resources and time allotments. Let me reiterate one thing, para educators' working conditions are students' learning conditions. Yet they continue to be underpaid and undervalued. They pour their hearts into this work because they are devoted to our students reaching their full potential. However, we live in one of the wealthiest states in the country. And our budget choices continue to fail our students, our educators and our schools. There is a broad frontal assault on public education right now, which means that paras are increasingly overworked and underpaid. And ultimately impacts the quality of education they can provide to our students. They take this personally. Let's make no mistake, students most impacted will be those who are the most financially disadvantaged. And paras also find themselves struggling to make ends meet on wages that barely surpass the poverty line. Unable to afford basic healthcare or retire with dignity, which is why many of them are forced to juggle multiple jobs just to survive. And due to what is essentially a technicality, they're legally barred from applying for and collecting unemployment over the summer months when they're not in school. And not receiving a paycheck. Too many para educators are already forced to work multiple jobs during the school year to make ends meet. HB seven, one, nine, five is a small step towards recognizing their value and treating para educators with the respect they deserve. While the intent behind HB seven, one, nine, excuse me, HB seven, one, nine, five. Is appreciated and supported by para educators, what they really need are higher wages, more affordable healthcare. And access to secure retirement benefits. I urge the committee to support House Bill seven, one, nine, five. While also working to prove pay and benefits for para educators in Connecticut. Thank you.
Uh, I don't see any end, so thank you for your time and testimony today.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Michelle Cole. Michelle, I think uh I, we can't hear you. Your, your audio may not be on. I didn't see you being muted. Michelle?
Ms. Cole, you may need to change your audio input on Zoom.
I saw that she's trying to connect to audio. Just one second, I'm gonna see if she's. Found the access. Michelle, we will come back to you, I promise. Uh, hopefully you can get that audio situation figured out. Uh, up next, we have Brenda Lopez. Jennifer Jennings. Jennifer Jenny. Floor's yours.
Hi, I am Jennifer Jennings with the Connecticut Heating and Cooling Contractors Association. Um, that was actually a para educator from my child's school on the phone, so I apologize for leaving. It's been a very educational experience today sitting up here and listening. Um, alright, so I am, let's see, pull back out my lovely notes because that call had me slightly flustered. Um, I'm up here in regards to Senate Bill fourteen, eighty-five with regards to the hiring ratio. Um, I'm definitely no, no foreigner to this topic. Um, there are, this is for a study. Again, another working group, another study. I have been working for the Connecticut Heating and Cooling Contractors since two thousand and six, so I have been up here for nearly two decades. And this is the same topic and the same bill that comes up over and over again. Um, going back to two thousand and six and two thousand and seven, Senator Calipatro and Representative Stone at the time as the co-chairs of the General Law Committee. Put in place these working groups. Um, it was made up of bold labor and it was union and non-union at the table. Um, didn't really get very far and and we didn't come anywhere. Fast forward to two thousand and seventeen, Representative DiAgostino put in place by statute a working group that was supposed to meet three times per year. Um, he actually named to the, to that workforce, um, to that, to that working group, uh. A member of each one of the five skilled trades on the union side and a member from the non-union side. So it was comprised of ten people. It was a very balanced approach with work, with the working group. But bottom line, nothing changed. They met, the reports came in and there is nothing that moved the mark, if you will. So we hear, we heard a lot of testimony in commerce, which is ultimately where this bill. On the re- removal of this hiring restriction belongs because it's a jobs bill. We are not talking about safety, we are not talking about training, we are looking to create more jobs in the state of Connecticut, more opportunities for youth. As they graduate from high school and look at career paths and opportunities, the trades in Connecticut have so much opportunity right now. Um, and they have for a very long time, and I know Representative Ackert mentioned that the number of licenses, the license holders is not growing, they're aging. But the total number of license holders in the state is just not growing. So how are we going to staff, if you will, all of the initiatives, whether it be energy efficiency coming out of this building? Um, indoor air quality, there's a whole variety of wonderful initiatives, but it requires the staffing. It requires the labor to be able to complete these initiatives. Companies are looking to hire. Um, we have two very different business models that we were talking about and that is what happens when we all come to the table. I know um a prior testimony said that one side is a stick in the mud. I I don't see us either side as a stick in the mud, but this is a restriction that really regulates a hiring practice. So in Kim Glassman's testimony, she said that Public Act that came through in twenty twenty-three did change. To make it so that the first three hires are one-to-one. That's, she literally made the point right there. If we can hire at one-to-one for the first three hires and no one is concerned about training. And no one is concerned about safety, the only thing that the hiring ratio does is restrict companies from growing. We are literally telling a sector of of employers how many they can hire. I mean, we don't tell people how many kids can go to college for a sociology degree. We don't tell nurses how many can go for nursing. Even if the job isn't available for them and they get out, we don't say you can't go. But the apprenticeship is seven hundred and twenty hours of trade-related instruction plus eight thousand on the job hours. And this bill restricts these apprentices from getting access to those eight thousand on the job hours. When we talk about completion rates, it is very different from the union to the non-union and there's the business models. We cannot monitor the completion rates for telling of whether a contractor is a good contractor or not.
Ms. Jennings, your time is almost up. Please conclude your remarks.
My apologies. If I, if I were to leave Company A to go work for Company B. My hours stay with me, but Company A gets that black mark that Representative Ackert mentioned or and it was mentioned in other testimony. They get the black mark for having me leave. I could leave because I want to be closer to home. I could leave for two dollars, three dollars more an hour. I could leave for a variety of reasons. But it's unfair to say that that company didn't complete because Company A. Didn't, didn't fire the person. It wasn't a termination, if that makes sense. It's just a non-complete and somebody should track that apprentice through to see where they landed. Um, so I guess if you guys have any um questions for me on that, um, a- as far as the data is concerned, I know. Um, I think it was Representative Wilson maybe who was was asking questions about data. I would compel the state of Connecticut to publish this data. That is our Department of Labor and they should publish it. I don't think these are bad actors out there. Out of the fifteen hundred HVAC companies in Connecticut, only two hundred and sixty-three of them are actually apprenticeship sponsors. Um, I don't think they're bad actors. And um, and that's, that's it on that. In regards to our paras, I don't think our paras are are paid enough. I don't really have much more to say over there other than they're the backbone of my kid's school system. Representative Weir is actually my representative. Um, and Glastonbury Schools and our our paras absolutely um are our backbone. Um, while I am in here on Senate Bill eight, thirty, OSHA standards absolutely cover um. A lot of what that bill is doing and saying, um, our contractors put our technicians up in a hundred and thirty-degree attics. In the summer to make sure the rest of the house in the building is not a hundred and thirty degrees. Um, I think there's a lot of restrictions in there that would be problematic. Um, I think some of my contractors would like a further conversation or a deeper dive on that. And um, and that's it. I mean, I learned about drivers today and I learned about lifeguards. I think schools with pools, I don't know about your districts, your district has a pool. The kids should be taking lifeguarding as an option in their HPE programs, but none of that's why I'm here. So if you have any questions.
Thank you, Representative Weir.
Thank you, Jen, a fine constituent from the town of Glastonbury. Um, I would, one thing you touched on and not to drag this out, but um. You talked about the two business models. We heard it alluded to earlier today between the open shop and and the union. Both operating um in in different arenas for the most part. Can you elaborate briefly on uh what, you know. For those listening at home, what uh, wh- why the, you know, we've got one set of rules for two different um. People, two different type, two different business models, uh, through you, Mr. Chair.
So the union holds the licenses and the union also holds, they're the sponsor and they hold the apprentice cards. So whether it's thirty companies that are members of the union, thirty individual companies, the uni- union local, the organization. Is the actual sponsor, not the individual companies, whereas on the non-union side, it's the individual companies. So that's the two different business models. In terms of the workload is very different as well. For, again, it was stated in here too, I believe it was Representative Ackert who said a lot of the union companies are not doing residential work. We all hire electricians, HVAC technicians, plumbers. I don't know if anyone's hired lately. It's very challenging to get them. And the market rate is certainly very high um because of supply and demand. So some of my larger companies would never hire at one-to-one. Matter of fact, some of them aren't even apprenticeship sponsors. Because they just don't put apprentices out on some of these larger power plant jobs. Um, some of these larger municipals and government work um are larger jobs, so they just don't put them out even at a one-to-one out in the field. They don't hire that way and they don't, they they just aren't even sponsors necessarily. But the ones that are looking to come change, change out my water heater, um, you know, going to Mrs. Jones's house to service it. They absolutely hire. They should be hiring at one-to-one. They are providing entry-level training. Um, and remember, every apprentice is absolutely an investment, whether it's on the union side or it's on the non-union side. Um, the framework and the conversation about a partnership is absolutely an investment in training in our future workforce.
I don't see any other questions of the committee, uh, Representative Gauthier.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what do you ascribe to the large discrepancy that was brought up earlier? In completion rates uh for apprentice programs?
So not seeing the data from the Department of Labor. I I mean, if I were to able to see all of our sponsors and how many they brought in. The completion rate discrepancy comes in if you had Company A but were a member of one of the local unions. And I had Company B, when they leave you or when they leave me to go to work for you, they're still. Their licenses are held in the same umbrella, so the local, the union never gets a, doesn't not complete them. Because they're staying within the same training facility. Their 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 placement remains the same with the local. On the other side. They leave for a variety of different reasons and it could be, there's plenty of work. There's, there's so much work. Um, but it could be closer to home, different, different market sector, wanting to um. Get more exposure in residential, maybe to grow a little bit more in commercial. I mean, we could talk about that even in different industry, right? Like nurses leaving one department in a hospital for another, potentially another hospital for different experiences, larger versus smaller.
So. You know, the the whole push in what you're trying to get across is that this is a jobs program, so. Do you think that in the non-union sector that these apprentices are eventually finishing, just not with the original company? Or do you think there is a larger percentage not finishing? And and if there is a much larger percentage not finishing their apprentice program. Then doesn't that cut into this, you know, uh, helping create more jobs?
So absolutely, um, I think the vast majority are finishing. They're absolutely finishing. Whether they're finishing with with the next company, they're absolutely finishing their apprenticeship. Um, once you secure the apprenticeship and you're working towards your hours, they're not just not finishing. It's, it's. It's going to, you you're putting a lot of effort into that training and that completion. If you've already completed your seven hundred and twenty hours of trade-related instruction and you're. Two, three thousand hours into the eight thousand, they're not just leaving industry at that point. Your, your trade license is worth its weight in gold, to be honest with you. Um, they're definitely completing. So seventy-nine percent of the HVAC market is non-union. Seventy-nine percent of the registered apprentices today, I should say, are non-union, majority of them. Um, they're, they're finishing them. I just think it's a.
We have data on that or not?
Yes, and I would, I would encourage you guys to compel the Department of Labor to produce that data. It should be, this, this is twenty twenty-five. This data should be so readily available. I mean, we have the numbers. That's how I know it's seventy-nine percent of registered apprentices are non-union. Um, in the HVAC market, so looking at the S-two licenses, it's actually higher in the E, in the electrical and higher in the plumbing.
Yeah, I, I would like to see the data on, you know, following all the way through if somebody does change a company because. To me, the data that we do have, you know, it, it, it looks like. In the non-union sector, so uh, uh, a a lot less people are finishing their apprentice program.
So if we took the ten thousand S-two licenses. Eight thousand of them are non-union, working for non-union companies. That's, it's the vast majority that are working for non-union. The data that you're referencing, I don't know because we haven't, we haven't seen it. Everyone is talking about different data. But if we go back, this particular bill is looking at creating yet another working group to study, to collect the very data that we have. That I have been asking for and looking to for and talking about since two thousand and six.
So then wouldn't that be a good thing that we're gonna get it?
I don't know if if a working group is what's going to get it. Um, I did put an FLI request in um to look at that. I. I surveyed my own membership and it would create hundreds of jobs tomorrow, literally hundreds of jobs in all of your districts. By opening up, creating greater opportunity for graduates from our public high schools to go out. They do not need to go on to college necessarily and get college debt. There is, it's a very, very lucrative career to access the trades. But the point is you can go to a private, you can go to a Porter and Chester, you can go to CTEC's adult ed night program. The problem is you start taking those 720 hours towards trade-related instruction and you can't get placement. The union is a wonderful business model. I grew up in a union construction household. They place all of theirs and they limit how many they can take in, right? It's an elite program. It truly is. So the union will, they have a lot of, there in the winter time, a lot of their technicians are on the bench because they are working in a sector of the market. They're really not servicing all of our homes. So in order to, again, meet the demand of the initiatives that this legislature is passing, we need more workers. We need to grow the workforce. And if it is the private sector, the non-union who has the opportunity to hire more, why would the state of Connecticut tell a company that they cannot hire more?
Yeah. And again, I think that's the question, which is why I think getting the data, doing the work group makes sense, at least to me. But thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Wilson.
Thank you again for coming and testifying. Just several questions, kind of walking me through a few things. So one, the first question, you know, you were just saying how changing, when we talk about changing ratios today would create hundreds of jobs. Walk me through what that looks like. You know, an individual graduates high school. Walk me through that process of them finding an individual employer, going through the process and so on and so forth.
So I get those calls. I get them on a regular basis from students that are looking for apprenticeships, whether it be graduating from Glastonbury High School and going to IEC to take their 720 hours of electrical instruction, or even students that are graduating from CTECs and coming out with their 720 hours of instruction and looking for placement, right? They need to get the 8,000 on the job hours. So they're applying and whether they apply to ABC Mechanical or XYZ Mechanical, if they don't have any room on their apprenticeship program because they don't have, they might have 12 license holders, but they can only have four apprentices and they already have four apprentices. They have no room. Can't hire another apprentice, even though they have 12 license holders. They could put them out on the job site one-to-one, but the state of Connecticut is telling that company, you cannot hire those other eight apprentices.
And then just to follow up, so when we talk about safety standards and things of that sort, what does the data around workplace injuries and whatnot look like? Have you seen data or any of that related to ratios and things in that realm?
I have talked to some of our insurance carriers that are members of the association to see if there's any significant difference in, you know, neighboring states who have. But we're talking about the job site is one-to-one. So the safety and the training element doesn't change at all. Because remember, this hiring ratio is a hiring restriction. It's strictly on the hiring side. We are not talking about the job site at all because the job site ratio is one-to-one. So we're not talking about greater safety issues. We're not talking about, you know, a decline in training. Because when you send the one teacher, the one journeyman out with the one apprentice, right? One teacher to one student out in the fields, you're sending them out one-to-one. What this ratio is, is just a hiring restriction. It's telling the company who has the 12 license holders that they cannot put them out one-to-one because they could only have four apprentices.
And so, so since, so these apprentices are not, so the one-to-one that you're saying is happening on the work site. So what, so the three-to-one, it's for what purpose then is more so the question?
To regulate competition and restrict growth.
And so from a hiring perspective, after you've hired the three-to-one ratio, what is the purpose then moving forward for the other journeyman or apprentice? You know, they're in a three-to-one ratio. What does that consist of? Walk me through kind of like what that part consists of. So after they've been hired, what's the purpose of that three-to-one then?
So if 12 of us show up right now for a job, you have 12 license holders at your company and 12 students show up for a job, they're looking to be hired as apprentices. Only four of us are going to get hired because you only have room, according to the state of Connecticut, to hire four. So four of us get hired and now you send them out one-to-one. They go out into the job site. Technician one goes out, technician with apprentice one, technician two with apprentice two, technician three with apprentice three, technician four with apprentice four, technicians five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12 go out without an apprentice. Why? That is what this restriction does. It's strictly a human resource thing. It's right at hiring. It's got, that's what this is. So we should be opening up the opportunity for more students, more apprentices.
Okay. And then the other question, and I've asked this in other hearings as well. I also look at this from a diversity perspective. And so how, when we talk apprenticeships and whatnot, whether they're leaving the CTEC system, individuals post, you know, they went to regular high school and, look, I want to go and do this now. How diverse is the field?
The field, I'm actually glad you asked that. This field is not diverse. The construction industry collectively is really not a diverse industry. There should be and could be so much more opportunity. And I think that could segue me down a whole nother, a whole nother area of education. I feel like pathways should be an absolute in schools. I know Danbury is doing a tremendous job with pathways in their programs. I think all of our public schools should offer some form of exposure to this trade. Credential them. Let them take their OSHA, get their OSHA card, a blueprint reading, a foundations of electrical or mechanical. These should be, you don't have to bring in a multimillion-dollar shop class, but you should be providing exposure. And I think some of our inner-city public schools should absolutely be looking to offer this. But again, we can offer this training, right, and exposure to these trades. But then when they graduate, can't get the job in the trade, which is what happens. Some of the kids will go and work for CVS or Stop &amp; Shop and then they become complacent, like they're making money and they're happy there and they don't actually then go into their trade. Because it was such a struggle. They applied to so many companies, but the company couldn't hire, they can only hire four apprentices. They couldn't hire the other eight. I'm just asking that, we could, we could keep studying this. You can keep asking for data sets. Compel the state of Connecticut, Department of Labor, to give you whatever data you are looking for. They absolutely have it. These fancy little computers do so many things we can get, that they can get the data. We'd all probably like it, the same data that we can all look at. But the bottom line is this is a jobs bill. It's really commerce, it's jobs, it's creating more opportunities for more youth in Connecticut, more disengaged, disconnected youth into amazing careers.
Thank you for the questions. Oh, okay. I apologize. I thought you wanted to. Senator.
I just have a hopefully easy question to answer. So on the jobs, what would you say in your industry is the average, if there's an average or a set rate for the journeyman?
For the journeyman, I've bet 180 contractor members around the state and it varies pretty significantly with our Fairfield County companies paying significantly more. Traffic and cost of living plays a differential there. But I have the journeyman earning anywhere, I would say, from $32 to $57 an hour was last summer's, last summer's, and that depends between a D2, which is a two-year license, versus an S2, which is a four-year license. And that's their hourly rate, plus their benefits. And the contractors that are members of the association provide gym memberships, car washes. Some of them take home trucks or vans. 401K option, the association offers a 401K that a lot of our members are part of. So there's a lot of, you know, full health insurance.
And you said 32 to 58?
57.
57. And what is the rate that you would say is the average for the apprentice?
It's funny, when you guys raised minimum wage, my contractors didn't blink because they've been paying significantly more than minimum wage for quite a while. I see the apprentices coming in anywhere, depending upon first-year apprentice versus, because it's a graduation rate and you set that with the Department of Labor. The Department of Labor has a representative that works with each contractor to sit down and talk about their wage scale, their graduation rate. If you started out at $20 an hour as the apprentice, you would be whatever you're saying you're graduating them at. It goes to maybe 22 after year one and 24 after year two and maybe 26 after year three. And let's just say then 28 or 29 in their final year and then they sit for their test. There's a struggle for some to pass the test. Some of us just aren't great test takers to begin with. That is a struggle. So they might finish their 720 hours and they might finish their 8,000 hours on the job, but then they struggle to pass the exam. And it might take them a couple of extra tries, a couple of months. They might reinstate their apprenticeship card to renew it, to continue. But it's not, it's absolutely, the argument that says it's cheap labor, it's not cheap labor. Training is an absolute investment. That contractor wants that technician licensed because they could put them out on their own then, right? And you hire your next apprentice available into that slot. So it is, it's a training opportunity. And actually, while I have you guys here, I know we did hear about, from our drivers, about different languages in apps and stuff. The same should be said about having our license exams in different languages. I know Spanish is the most frequently asked for one and you can get your license exam in Spanish. But I've had a few members reach out. It's Arabic or Russian or some different languages. Again, 2025, we should be able to AI that exam and just convert it like that into another language. But it's hard because even though the technician is a wonderful technician and understands what they're doing, when you have to, when you struggle to understand either legal language or some of the verbiage, I'm noticing that there's a high request for accommodation in language. That's something maybe to consider looking at if you're looking at language for other things.
Thank you. I have enough further questions.
Representative Gauthier for the second.
All right, based off of those questions, I had another thought. So you talked about how in the non-union sector, you might jump during your apprenticeship, you might jump from Company A to Company B and that's why it might look like less people finish their apprentice programs than actually do. But in terms of pay, do you keep that same pay level if you jump to different companies?
Yes, you do. And chances are, if you're leaving a company to go to another company, you might be going, you might actually be getting more. You, the next company might be offering you more. You're not leaving and getting paid less.
So that's, that's part of the apprentice program or how is that guaranteed?
Again, they're all different companies. So when you leave Company A and you go to work for Company B, you're going to, your field rep might even change. The Department of Labor representatives are assigned via district. So if you moved from Stratford to Rocky Hill, you're going to change who your Department of Labor representative is when you move sponsor, right? You're moving from Company A to Company B, which is sponsor A to sponsor B. But your contract then, you're starting out with a new contract. You might be a year or two coming into the contract because you've already completed your first-year apprenticeship working for sponsor I. You don't, the apprentice doesn't lose their hours. Just Company A just got a termination. They didn't complete them, right? So we have.
No, I get that. I was just, again, wondering about the.
The pay, the pay stays. The pay goes with them. Or it might be better.
Or I guess could be worse because if you're moving from like Fairfield where it's higher pay to somewhere else in the state?
Yeah, theoretically.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Any other questions from the committee? Seeing none, greatly appreciate your time and testimony. Hopefully everything's okay at school.
Hi, everything is okay at school and appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Take care. We're going to go back to Michelle Cole, who's been waiting patiently. Hopefully the audio is working now. Oh, it's not. Oh, no. Your audio is not working. Are you able to take the headset off and maybe your computer? I feel really bad. There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right, okay. Here we go. It's just going to be a little. Hear you. There we go. Okay, Senator Kushner, Representative Sanders, Representative Weir and members. My name is Missy Cole. I am a resident of Roxbury, Connecticut for 22 years. I'm a parent educator that works in the great city of Danbury and the largest high school in the state. It's kind of funny. I've been here for 31 years, listening to everybody else. They've only been there for way less time than I have. I'm also a proud member of the CSEA, SEIU Local 201. And I'm going to offer the following testimony in support of House Bill 7195. I also like to add that I am the president of our union in Danbury and have been so for so many years. Parent educators, as you have heard, are a crucial part of Connecticut's public education system. Working at the high school, I have many tutors that are running ragged from room to room. They are short-staffed up here. We just can't keep up and that's just a known fact for years now. In order to change this, we need to start supporting our pairs and our tutors and giving them more supplements and this bill is a start to it as well. It's going to sadden you to hear that working here for 31 years, I only make $20.60 an hour. And I do have to pay part of my cost share of my insurance. I have a family now of three. My two older ones have moved out. I've got a husband that's not well right now, so it's very important that I stay working. I should have retired three years ago. Am I ready to retire? No. I love working with my students. I run the ISS room at the high school. I run it with another parent educator without a certified staff member. We need to keep supporting our pairs as much as we can and this is one of the steps, like I said, that would help do this. We need more help. We need to give them some income during the summer months. Many of my pairs and tutors take on not one, but two or three jobs. I am one of them. I also co-chair at the high school different sports and I also support our sports program. I cannot say enough about all of the pairs across the state of Connecticut. Seeing the satisfaction on these kids' faces when they've accomplished something, including the kids in here who are not here for a good reason. In closing, I'd like to say thank you all again for taking the time and the patience for me to get my computer working. And if anyone has any questions, I would like to take some now.
Representative Wilson.
Thank you, Michelle, for one testifying. Several questions, I mean, I've asked several people the same question. You know, within this area as a parent educator. Could you, could you explain or talk to the part of the uncertainty where there are those parent educators that have an opportunity to continue employment into the summer months based off extended school year opportunities? Whereas there are those that, you know, come the last day of school, there could possibly be the uncertainty of not knowing what their position is or holds going into the summer. Unlike those that are in the certified staff area as such as principals, social workers and so on.
Sure. I do believe, you know, it's different district to district. Our contract, we do have a set date that we expect us know that we are coming back. But again, things change. Monetary budgets get cut. Then who gets cut first? Then we get cut and that takes away from our students. You know, August, you know, is the golden hour. You're waiting for that letter to come. You know, am I working? Where am I working? A lot of times, not having any income during the summer, many of our members do take on jobs. Fortunately, sometimes they stay with those getting paid more and they need the money. I don't know how to get them back. I can tell you, when I started here 31 years ago, we had over 600 members in our union. We are less than half of that number at the time. And again, there's been incentives. We just can't get them to stay. Coming in at minimum wage is, you know, is a kicker. Again, 2066, 31 years. It's embarrassing. I mean, I have to work other jobs. I need to support our family right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you for the work you're doing at Danbury High School. I know that's a very tough place to work.
Thanks, Julie.
Overcrowded. Hopefully it will get better when the new school opens and there'll be less overcrowding. But I know that pairs throughout the Danbury Public Schools, I've been in touch with them and they do amazing work. And so we thank you for everything you're doing.
I appreciate that.
Because I'm from Danbury.
I was born and raised here. I just transplanted 22 years ago.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Michelle, greatly appreciate your patience and thank you for your testimony.
Thank you for having the patience with me. Have a great day, everyone. Enjoy the weather.
Up next, we have Robert Huggins.
Hello, distinguished members of the Labor and Public Relations Committee. My name is Dr. Robert Huggins. I'm president of Occupational Safety and Athlete Performance at the Corey at the Corey Stringer Institute and an assistant professor in the Department of Kinesiology at the University of Connecticut. My expertise is human thermal regulation during exercise or labor in the heat and safety best practices for athletes, soldiers and laborers. I'm here to provide testimony on behalf of the University of Connecticut regarding Senate Bill eight thirty and Act Establishing Safety Standards to Prevent Heat-Related Illness in Workplaces. We are very much in support of the intent of this bill and the protections that it would afford to workers beyond the antiquated OSHA heat standards when the risk for heat illness is high. However, we strongly recommend that you consider amending language to align with current heat safety best practices. Multiple sections of the proposed legislation do not align with best practices as recommended by nationally recognized safety experts. Specific to the document, we are concerned about the temperature thresholds that were used, the definition of heat illness utilized, the improper treatment protocols for exertional heat stroke, which is a medical emergency, the one-size-fits-all approach to hydration and provision of water by the employer, the exemption to shade access for agricultural workers, the lack of detailed detail related to heat acclimatization best practices and the lack of exemptions necessary for emergency operations personnel that are directly involved with the protection of life or property or the restoration of essential services. Specifically, there's language in the bill that should be amended uh regarding heat illness. Currently, it states a suggested treatment that an employer shall monitor such employee for signs or symptoms of heat illness. If an employee is showing signs or experiencing symptoms of heat illness, an employer shall allow the employee to remain in the shade until such uh signs or symptoms subside. If an employer to follow this recommendation with an exertional heat stroke victim, that person would most certainly die or experience lifelong complications. Immediate and aggressive whole body cooling is required to save this worker's life. Furthermore, best practices for the measurement of environmental impact on the human uh during work or exercise is the use of a wet bulb globe temperature device or WBGT index rather than ambient temp, which is dry bulb as stated in the document, or heat index. We recognize that ambient temp and heat index are well are more uh understood and would support their use. However, they are not the same. An ambient temp of ninety degrees Fahrenheit is not the same as a heat index of ninety degrees Fahrenheit. There are examples of conflicting information throughout the uh document on various lines eighteen, one fifteen and one twenty four. Furthermore, uh the thresholds that were chosen uh for uh dry bulb, the it's mentioned on line seventy one. It is not in accordance with the American College of Global Industrial Hygienist Guidelines and the Proposed OSHA twenty twenty four federal standards. The heat trigger should be amended to be ninety degrees Fahrenheit ambient temperature. Similar to outdoors uh for indoors on line one ninety two, eighty two degrees Fahrenheit was chosen as the initial heat trigger and on line one nine one sixty nine eighty seven as the high heat trigger. Frankly, it is unclear where these limits came from and if they are referring to ambient temperature or heat indices. Regarding heat acclimatization, the way that heat acclimatization is mentioned is without any guidance. The current best practices state specifically that new workers should increase by twenty percent of the normal workload for each day starting on day one and continuing until day five when they can be at a hundred percent of the workload. Furthermore, there is no mention of return to work after extended leave, that being greater than fourteen days or an absence in addition to new employees or workers who are relocated from colder to warmer conditions. All of these groups require proper heat acclimatization process.
Mr. Huggins, your time is almost up. Please include your remarks.
Thank you. In summary, we support the implementation of increased heat protections for workers in uh especially as climate change, heat waves and extreme temperatures increase. While we support the intent of the bill, we would like to see improvements in the clarity of the language and inclusion of best practices as I previously stated and will provide in my written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to address the committee and I appreciate your support.
Thank you, Dr. Huggins. Uh Senator Kushner.
Thank you. Um it's I really appreciate your testimony uh here today. I um I'm gonna try. I'm sorry, I'm not on my Zoom right now, so I can't see you while I'm talking, but I um this is a bill that was proposed by the Senate President, um Senator Looney, and I know uh a lot of the things that you spoke to, I'm sure he would be very interested in. So what I'd like to suggest is uh this bill mirrors uh and was drafted very similarly to what exists in California. And that may be outdated and some of the things that you said uh in your testimony may help us improve upon a law of another state. That often happens. So I think what, you know, I would suggest is that we um find a time where we can put you together with our policy folks and our LCO and have further discussion about this. Um so I hope you'll be amenable to doing that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to provide that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Representative Weir.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Huggins. I uh it um it's funny because when I saw your the 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 association that you work with or the organization, I remember hearing the news of uh the death of Corey Stringer many years ago. And uh not a big football fan, but that name has stuck with me all these years. So thank you for what you do. Um and I appreciate you bringing some of these clarifications to the table. Uh because as a a former uh general contractor and contractor, we um you know, we we recognize that OSHA has many standards for heat-related industry uh injuries and took that very seriously. And a lot of the guidelines that we were following to protect our employees, uh many of whom were working in, you you know, hot environments depending on the the time of year. Um you you know, we followed those guidelines and and took them very seriously and I recognize some conflicts and some potential um hardships in here for employers. I appreciate um you know, the opportunity that you'll have to drive some of this language and make clarifications going forward. So thank you for uh bringing this to our attention.
I appreciate that. And our namesake, Corey would appreciate all of that as well. Thank you so much for your time.
I don't see other hands. Uh Dr. Huggins, thank you for your testimony.
My pleasure.
Up next, we have Sarah Parker McKernan.
Hi. Um good afternoon, Senator Kushner, Representative Sanchez and distinguished members of the Labor Committee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today in support of HB seven one nine six an act concerning limitations on the use of non-compete agreements. My name is Sarah Parker McKernan and I'm a legislative policy advocate for Connecticut's legal services programs, which include New Haven Legal Assistance, Greater Hartford Legal Aid and Connecticut Legal Services. The legal services programs provide free legal services to low-income individuals in civil matters throughout the state. We support S HB seven one nine six, which, among other things, prohibits non-compete agreements for those employees earning less than three times the hourly minimum wage. Traditionally, non-compete covenants were intended to protect an employer's uh competitive advantage by preventing more highly trained and compensated employees from taking a job at a competing business and disclosing specialized knowledge or skills acquired at the former employer. HB seven one nine six limits non-compete contracts to workers with the power to bargain over these agreements. Non-competes result in less upward mobility and lower wages and creates greater imbalances in the workplace, especially when you consider the lack of bargaining power of low-wage and entry-level workers. Employees in jobs such as house cleaners, food service staff, caretakers in group homes or nursing facilities, hairstylists and auto mechanics are being asked to sign non-compete agreements as part of the hiring process. These workers do not have specialized training or technical skills specific to their employer and are not privy to trade secrets held by higher-paid employees. Low-wage workers often feel unable to find new and better jobs because of non-compete clauses. Most employees in Connecticut are considered at-will and have very limited bargaining power in their work environment since they can be terminated without cause. A non-compete agreement heightens the low-wage employees' fear of violating their employment contracts. Workers very often assume that non-compete agreements are valid and enforceable and lack the financial resources to hire an attorney to challenge these agreements. It's important to note that HB seven one nine six contains provisions that help all workers in the workplace, not just low-income workers. HB seven one nine six, excuse me, um uh also balances constraints on employers with constraints on workers. The language in this bill has considered the concerns that we've heard from both sides of this issue over the years. And seven one nine six still allows non-compete covenants, if needed, to protect protect legitimate business interests such as trade secrets, confidential confidential information or goodwill with customers. It also forbids workers from soliciting a former employer's prior customers or workers after separating and permits non-solicitation clauses and exclusivity agreements containing reasonable parameters. We urge the committee to pass HB seven one nine six, which helps to ensure that low-wage employees have access to job mobility and career development. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh any question? Committee seeing none, thank you for your testimony and time today.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Bob Connors.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. The floor is yours, sir.
Yes, uh thank you uh to the Chair, Vice Chair, ranking members and members of the uh Committee. I'm here to speak about um Committee Bill number eight thirty. I've been in the construction industry for thirty three years. Um ranging from mining uh facilities, asphalt, concrete, manufacturing, heavy highway, site development and building construction, representing over forty five uh million work hours. Uh on any given day, we have a thousand uh workers on our projects. Uh on December twenty eighth nineteen seventy three, the State Plan for Enforcement of Occupational Safety and Health Standards in Connecticut was approved by OSHA. This plan included coverage of private workplaces as well as a program for public employees. By an act of the uh Connecticut General Assembly uh effective July first nineteen seventy eight, the Connecticut OSHA Act was amended to exclude coverage of private sector employees. After several revisions and assurances, OSHA approved the resubmitted state plan on October first of nineteen seventy eight. Federal OSHA maintains a robust outreach and enforcement infrastructure to address illness, uh heat illness prevention of the construction industry. For example, the General Duty Clause nineteen oh four, record-keeping uh and reporting um general safety and health provisions, safety, training and education, employee emergency action plans, medical services and first aid, sanitation and standards um uh within the construction standard. Um as it relates to Committee Bill number eight thirty, uh the State uh of Connecticut um bill contains no insider scheme outlining how the Act Establishing Safety Standards to Prevent Heat-Related Illnesses in the Workplace will be administered, regulated or supported. Uh just an example of some of the things um that are out aligned within the standard, uh it talks about shade, um artificial blockage, uh that's not defined, artificial is not defined, blockage is not defined. If a tent uh or fly is used, how does the State Building Code, uh chapter thirty one, how does the State Fire Safety Code, chapter thirty one, uh apply um in these instances uh relative to uh clearances, location of generators, permits, uh et cetera. Uh in summary, my thirty three-year experience of a safety professional working across various sectors of the construction industries offers no evidence that Committee Bill number eight thirty is necessary. Uh on July first nineteen seventy eight, the Connecticut State of Connecticut OSHA Act was amended by the Connecticut General Assembly to exclude private workplaces from the state plan coverage. You might uh know this as CONOSHA. And by the way, they do a fantastic job um serving their mission. The incident rates of uh for non-emergencies and emergencies published by OSHA within the notice of proposed uh proposed rulemaking for heat injury and illness prevention in outdoor and indoor work settings uh indicates uh that a non-emergency incident rate is point zero zero two per hundred and emergencies is point zero zero zero. The existing Federal OSHA Compliance Directive Regulations and Outreach uh sources are sufficient. Committee Bill number eight thirty is one-size-fits-all. Uh an incomplete outline that does not recognize unique aspects of the construction industry, specifically the building construction industry and others. For example, we and we are largely a building con contractor and we have multi-employer job sites. We may have on any one given building construction site, twenty to twenty-five employers. This bill does not address roles and responsibilities as applies to that type of in place of employment. It also doesn't recognize labor management agreements. So we believe for these reasons that um we are rejecting uh Committee Bill number eight thirty. Happy to address any questions that you may have.
Uh thank you, Bob. Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Up next, we have Vale Conert-Yant.
Hi, yes, uh good afternoon. My name is Vale Conert-Yant and I'm here representing Region Nine A of the United Auto Workers, headquartered in East Hartford and belonging to tens of thousands of members in Connecticut, the Northeast and Puerto Rico. Uh we're proud members of the Connecticut For All Coalition and the Connecticut AFL-CIO. And I testified today in support of SB fourteen eighty seven, an act concerning transportation network companies and third-party delivery companies. Um as you may know, the UAW represents a wide variety of members in Connecticut, including Ford warehouse workers, teaching and research assistants at Yukon, dealers at Foxwoods Casino, designers at Electric Boat and a lot more. Um even though we don't all build cars, we all believe in worker justice from bumper to bumper. And that's why we're proud to stand up today for our siblings who work as rideshare and delivery drivers in Connecticut, many of whom are members of Connecticut Drivers United, a grassroots and driver-led organization um who you heard from earlier. We believe that this bill is an important first step in extending basic rights to these workers who have described to you today and in the past, the exploitation they face. And there's no reason, especially in the year twenty twenty five, that any worker should have a minimum wage of zero dollars and zero cents. Connecticut has an opportunity here to lead the fight to put people over profits by creating pay transparency for these hard-working drivers and requiring these ultra-profitable mega corporations making millions in this state to pay what they owe to do business here. Comptroller Scanlon's recent report showed that companies like Uber, Lyft and DoorDash are failing to pay state taxes to the tune of at least sixteen million dollars a year. And we believe that any legislator with a conscience should support this bill requiring these international corporations to first tell the truth to Connecticut workers and taxpayers and two, pay what they owe like every other Connecticut taxpayer. If we don't stand up for the rights of rideshare and delivery drivers today, the same corporate greed that's keeping these workers unprotected and underpaid is coming for all of our jobs next. We're already seeing the attempted Uberfication of other industries from healthcare to building trades to IT support, which is threatening to turn what were once good middle-class jobs into what we call twenty-first century peacework. Our union has been fighting battles like this since the nineteen thirties and we stand with our fellow auto workers and support this bill to win the rights they deserve. Um thank you so much, the Labor Committee, for your time.
Uh I don't see any hands, so thank you so much for your testimony and time today. Take care. I don't see anybody else here to speak. That will conclude our public hearing. Labor and Public Employees Committee will meet this Thursday. Uh the Thursday the thirteenth, that is, at ten AM in Room Two